Good evening, I would like to call the February 4th, 2025 New Albany Plain Local Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Fuller, here, Vice President McClellan.
Here.
Mr. Newman.
Here.
President McCullough.
Here.
And Mr. Wilson is participating via Zoom, however, he's not considered present for voting purposes.
Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation.
Superintendent Sawyers, are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda?
No, thank you.
Would John may have a motion and a second to improve tonight's agenda.
Thanks.
Ms. Fuller, it's Mr. McClellan, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Ms. Fuller, yes, Vice President McClellan.
Yes.
Mr. Newman.
Yes.
President McCullough.
Yes, and the motion passes. Next is discussion items, beginning with boardsmanship expectation. And in preparation for this conversation, I did go on the OSBA website and pull off the ins and outs of boardsmanship, and there's a copy of that at everyone to be. I'm just going to highlight a few things. It says, think about how you want to be remembered at the end of the journey, so as, as a board member. The board is an ongoing entity. You are only one member of the board that has existed before you and will go on in the future. Keep the big picture in mind. Focus your decisions on what's best for all the kids. Remind yourself of why you're there and keep the students first. True governance leadership happens at the big picture level. To help maintain that focus, allow the superintendent and staff to take care of the day-to-day operation of the schools. Watch them as they perform and give them the tools they need to put out the fires as you give guidance from the helicopter overhead. When micromanaging is the rule instead of the exception, roles and responsibilities are muddied, time and resources are wasted, and we make much more work for ourselves than necessary. Number three, act in the best interest of the district as a whole. You were elected to your position by a specific segment of your community, and at times people who were loyal to you during your campaign may ask for special favors that will benefit them or their children. At times, acting to benefit these interests might also benefit the whole district. Very often, however, making decisions that benefit special interests is in opposition to what's best for the district as a whole. You can serve, you can best serve your community by getting information from those who are impacted by a given decision. Your board should realize that it must focus on what is best for the greatest good of the district and the community. Weighing conflicting viewpoints is not always an easy task. Facing a friend or neighbor at the grocery store or at a social function with your board hat on can be difficult. However, by taking an objective look at the pros and cons of potential decisions and keeping your attention on the greatest good principle, you can make decisions that will keep the district moving in the right direction. Then number four, develop good working relationships with your fellow board members. As an individual board member, you only have authority when you're with the corporate body in legally called board meetings. You will serve yourself and your district well by remembering that you are only one member of the team. Therefore, one of the best things that you can do to influence other members of the team is develop good working relationships with fellow board members and the superintendent. Listen and observe before passing judgment. Seek to understand other points of view and always work toward consensus. Remember that positive relationships help breed positive results. And then number five, ask good questions about consequences. Consequences of board actions impact students. A board member needs to ask how the decision will negatively impact the students and how it will benefit all students. Your community and district expect your board to make decisions that are well thought out, reflect the greatest good principle, and are responsible. So I, I just thought that was a good overview of, you know, best practices from OSBA and a good place for us to start our discussion. And we can start anywhere, really. I mean, you know, what's working well and what we can improve on. And Mark, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, sure. You know, as I was thinking, planning to be in person, about, you know, the issue of working together well and, and, you know, setting some common understanding of, you know, what expectations we have for communication. And by that, I broadly mean, you know, what we, what we learn from someone communicating to us and, or what we say to someone else conveying something. And, you know, I think one of the, the challenges that I've certainly been aware of, you know, being on the board is that because of the restrictions about open meeting, it's difficult to keep everybody sort of abreast of current matters, right? And so, you know, find, and this is where I think, you know, Bill, your counsel and advice and experience with other boards will be helpful to us. You know, how, how do we as board members ensure that we, you know, sort of are always current or nearly always, you know, current when things are happening so that we have a full understanding of what any other one or more board members has? And, and so that was my sort of first thing. I've got a couple others, but that's probably enough to chew, chew on.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So, Mark, obviously, this is no, you know, I'm still having a corner on the market. I just know that from working with other boards, some boards have found ways to use technology to help in that aspect. So, because you always have that issue, right? That you can't like really deliberate, like if I'm a board member, I could call each one of my other four board members. I can give them information, you can give me information, but then I'm not supposed to go back and say, well, you know, Jennifer, John thought this on this and this on that, because that becomes deliberation about a board item or board business away from board. But it also sometimes becomes difficult if I have to like have that one-way communication. So what some boards have done is like, they've offered to the superintendent or the board president, I don't know what they're called, but there's some type of like recording platforms that you can be on where you could say, well, I want to put the button on your phone. You can leave a message and it automatically goes out and calls the other people that are on that list. That way, it kind of protects that conversation from happening, which naturally kind of happens because we're humans, right? And, but it allows you also a way to get that information out very quickly, very easily, without having to get in hold of four separate people if you need to get information.
Yeah.
Where you can just do one thing, you do it on your phone. And so I, I know some boards have done that, and I don't know what, I don't know what the software is called, but I know that, that, that does exist, and it can be helpful just to get information out. Because I think that's the biggest problem sometimes, just getting the information out. Every board member feels like they're fully informed of what's going on. I think it's easy sometimes to think like, well, you know, you as the board president probably have, whoever the board president is gets a lot of information, and then not everybody else gets all that, because it's just impossible to get it all out. So sometimes I think technology can help. And I like the, the, the one-way communication better, because then you can't hit reply all on the phone.
Yeah.
So, so it becomes a little bit easier, but that's just a thought or suggestion.
Did you have other things you wanted to add, Mark?
Um, yeah, so, you know, that's maybe communication among the group. One of the things that has been a learning experience for me is, you know, appreciating for better, for worse. When you are on school board, you know, people treat you differently, react to you differently. And you have to be like almost hyper-aware, I have to be hyper-aware of that, so that, you know, when I'm having a discussion with someone, I'm, I'm careful to make sure that what I'm saying and how I'm saying it, both in tone and body language, doesn't give some unintended message. And I'll, you know, share an example of a time when, you know, I fell short of that and didn't realize it in the moment. But at the beginning of the school year or late summer, we had a discussion about the cell phone policy, and I had asked some follow-up questions. And, you know, really kind of put the presenters on the spot in an uncomfortable way that really I wasn't intending to put them on, you know, under the, or on the hot seat. But it, that's the way it came across. And so, you know, I'm certainly, you know, know and expect that we'll ask questions in a, in a meeting. And I just, I've got that staple to the back of my brain now that I have to be very deliberate about those, you know, conversations. Because particularly, you know, I, I wasn't, that, that's the last message that I wanted to send was I'm putting you on the hot seat. Really, I was just more curious, and I guess, you know, I could have, I could have satisfied that curiosity differently in the meeting or, you know, in a follow-up conversation with the presenter. So I've known for a long time how uncomfortable it is to be at, standing at that podium. You know, looking at the school board, I've had to do it a couple times, and I'm sensitive to anybody that has to do it. It's, it's kind of awkward. And, you know, even people who are generally very comfortable speaking in public, it can be a little daunting. And so that also, you know, makes me, you know, appreciate the, what the presenter, you know, not only what they're hearing, but like what they're feeling as they're standing there. And they're, you know, the presentations are valuable, so we, we need to have them. But I think for me, just having a sensitivity on the, the context of that presentation, and then, you know, how I engage with, with the person. And, you know, the last message that I would want to send is, you know, either that I'm, that, that I didn't, you know, that I wasn't being respectful, because I have a great deal of respect for the leadership team in the district. So that's a little bit of just my own experience.
Thanks, Mark. That, that's a really helpful example and story you shared. It kind of leads into a little bit of board communications as well, and, you know, how we want to interact with presenters. And you brought up, you know, being respectful. And I think, you know, for me, I, as we think about who we want to show up as for, for presenters and for people who are watching our meetings, it's important that we demonstrate kindness, dignity, and respect. I think, you know, we may not always like what a presenter is sharing or agree with it, but they're also just a messenger of information. And so, you know, remembering that we're role models and we need to model our values, I think is really important as board members. You guys agree?
I, I agree. I've actually, this might be a, a good question, whether it's for, for you or for Michael. I think, you know, part of, part of what, maybe, maybe the public doesn't completely get this because they're just watching us in these meetings. But, you know, a lot of the things that do come in presentation form to us, we have some general awareness of because it's coming, coming through early as part of the board agenda. And there's at least some opportunity to get an idea of what's coming. And I know for the sake of transparency, you want to be able to have open dialogue in these meetings. But at the same time, I also think, you know, there could be, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, using your example, Mark, you know, there could be some things that, you know, come up, come to mind in the process of your own deliberation about what you're going to see. And there, I think it's okay, and you all tell me, I think it's okay sometimes if there's a tough question. You know, I mean, there's an opportunity to talk about that before the meeting. You know, we have the ability to reach out to the superintendent, to Sloften, Ken. You know, not every, not everything that we deal with has to be necessarily in the meeting, right? So part of it too, I think, is maybe being sensitive to that. And if you have, if you have a legitimate concern or maybe don't understand fully what the issue is, have, have a little bit of a preview conversation. Doesn't mean you can't then bring that up in the board meeting. But it, it also doesn't create an awkward situation where someone's caught completely off-guard by a question. You know, this is not meant to be gotcha hour when we have presenters up here. So if there's something that you feel like it needs, needs to be addressed or you don't understand, it is okay to have that conversation ahead.
I would agree. To reinforce that, I would just suggest that, it's why I share the slide deck with you in advance of the board meetings, that you have an opportunity to see it. Sometimes I don't finish it or with the person that's finishing it till the Saturday or Sunday prior to the board meeting, but generally, we try to make sure it's part of the stuff that goes out by Friday afternoon when we release the agenda. Do you have preview access to the slide deck? If it's being used as a presentation for a meeting, the public does not. We don't release the slide deck until the board meeting. So you get preview for really what John just outlined, to try to give you an opportunity. And when I send it, I typically invite you, if you have questions or comments or follow-up, call me, email me, text me, whatever, so that I can try to make sure, even if I get back to you and say, I'll make sure it's incorporated, so it's part of the presentation. So it doesn't mean to where John went, you can't ask the question. You're welcome to ask any question you want. It just may not be, we have the information right then and right there to answer your question. We try our best, but there might be a detail, something that you want that I can't have answered at the board meeting. So, but if you tell us in advance, it may not be in the slide deck, but they'll be prepared for it because the speaker, whoever's presenting that evening, if it's not me, Becky, Ken, or Lori, if it's someone else on the administrative staff or someone else in the school district, we'll make sure they're prepared sufficiently to answer your question.
So I guess I would ask, is this, you know, we're reviewing this, and it's good to review ins and outs of boardsmanship and communication protocols, but is this something you see as problematic within the way that we've been operating over the past several years? I guess I'm just trying to make sure I understand contextually. If there's nothing feedback, then you or me may not be feeling that way. Just trying to understand, like, do we have an issue here or do we?
On the communication side, I think there's times where we could have been prepared differently to answer a question that would have been presented at the board meeting if I had known in advance it was going to be asked. So it's not that you have to feed me every question, but if there's a topic that's related, but it wasn't tied specifically, it's related to the presentation, we could have been prepared differently to answer the question, to be more user-friendly to you at the board meeting. Because then it looks like we're ill-prepared, and that's not our intent. We want to be prepared to answer your questions because of your meeting schedule, but I have to understand what that conversation is supposed to be about.
I think my only comment, I mean, just communications-wise, if that's happening, I would hope that you guys would feel comfortable communicating that back either directly to board members or whatever protocols we have, because that's, that feedback, if that's happening, hasn't necessarily reached me directly and, you know.
So currently, I can tell you, I share that with the board president, because that's the protocol that's in place with the board. Now, if we're going to change that protocol, that's why we're having this conversation to talk about communications, what is that protocol? Because right now, you're typically set up as a board of education, and we're kind of bleeding into communications. Is that okay?
Yeah.
In the current structure that you have, most things follow through from what I've been directed to do. Go to board leadership, either through the president or vice president first. It's an individual thing, I call, I talk to you. But if it's a board thing, it goes to board leadership because that's the protocol you've established. So typically at the org meeting, that's why you have a board retreat, I asked this question a year ago, sitting at the board retreat. What's the protocol you want us to abide by so that we're meeting your needs, both from a parliamentary piece and leadership, but at the same time for you as individual board members?
And just to be clear, you guys can access Michael and Becky anytime you want.
You can.
It's just a matter of what, what is efficient for us. And so oftentimes, if, if I'm in like a board agenda review meeting and, and I have a bunch of information about, you know, what we're about to talk about, I'll call each one of you to prep you for, for that meeting. Michael's been doing that as well.
But if that's, I guess that's one of the questions we ask, it goes back to what's working for you in communications? Because I'm going to be honest and tell you, there's times I perceive where, this is my perception, right or wrong as the superintendent. And Mark kind of started here with his first example of trying to ask Bill the question, how can remain current of understanding what other board members know? So there's a lot of things that go to the board president simply because of agenda review, prep, school business stuff, the meetings that she's in, the subcommittee stuff that happens. All that stuff right now flows to the board president. Not saying it has to stay that way, but that's what it is. So Debbie gets access, and I'm just going to use that word, to information that I'm not saying can't stay that way. But I don't want anyone else feeling like you don't have access. You have access anytime you want, 24/7, 365, doesn't matter, call, text, phone, email, I get it all, it's fine. Same thing with Becky, the two of us report to the board of education. So that is the unfeathered access that you have. If you're not getting the access you need, or we're not communicating in a way that's meeting your needs, you have to tell me that, because if I don't hear it from Debbie, or I don't hear it from John, in this case, as vice president, then it doesn't change.
And just to be clear, I have not gotten that feedback that people are feeling like they're not getting information. What were you going to say, John?
Well, I was going to say, and, and I will also say, nothing's been brought to my attention in this case either. I will just say from my, however long it's been now on the board, I, I appreciate, and I think it's right that we as the board have access to, you know, have access to you and you, and you.
And you and you.
Right. But then that also comes with a greater responsibility, which is to not bog you down with a bunch of garbage.
Right.
Right? So, so I think, I would just say, and again, I'm just throwing this out there only because it's my experience from years, is I think you're busy enough that, that if we have a question, it, it should be a serious enough question or an important enough question. It shouldn't just be, you know, well, hey, I've got 15 minutes, I'm going to bother Michael about this. And I'm not saying anybody's doing that, I, I just want to put that out there.
I don't ever perceive that's happening.
No, I, I get that, and I don't want anybody to think that. I'm just saying, I appreciate the access, but we also, I think, have to be very, very respectful.
Right, but I would use another example, and I'm just going to use Jen. So, and I'm making this up. So if Jen has a question on X, and Jen asked me that question, when Jen gets to respond, I typically then follow up and I send everybody a, like, BCC email. If Jen sent it to me in the email, you all get blinded on the email to know that Jen asked me that question. Because if Jen asked me the question, I presume, well, someone else might have that question or want the same information. So then I BCC you to go to where Bill went, that you don't daisy chain, respond all, and do anything with that, because if you respond, it's only coming back to me because I blind copied you on the email.
Well, and that's a good way to keep everybody real-time, up to date, too.
Right, but when you do ask questions, I do give that information to other board members because one person asking might then be curious to someone else, why I didn't think about that. And I'm glad she asked it, I'm glad I have that information. But at the same time, when you do have a conversation with me, so let's just say Jen makes, comes to me and says, Michael, I think we should be doing A, B, C, and here's why can we talk about this? And we can have that conversation about A, B, C, but that's Jen's point of view as one board member. So then I have to talk to Debbie because it has to be a board decision, it's not Jen's decision. As an individual, Jen can't make the decision for the board. So if it's going to create something, I then have to know that a majority of the board wants this to occur.
So Bill, what would be a good process for that? In other words, let's streamline this.
Okay.
Rather than Jen going to Michael so that Michael can go to Debbie so that Debbie can come back to us, what's the, what process would be the right way for something like that to happen?
Well, you know, the thing about it is to say that you're these five board members, right? And you have, you have a president of the board, but mostly it's just for ministerial purposes, right? So the most efficient way may not be the most communicative way. And why I'm saying that by, like, if you wanted to make sure all that happened by the most efficient way is if you would probably say, well, everything has to be channeled through one board member, board president, or somebody. Do that, that way that person can make sure everybody knows what's going through, but that's always not the most.
Yeah.
Efficiency as, as opposed to effectiveness of the communication, I think, could be two different things.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking about more along, along the lines of, hey, I have an idea for something. Or somebody came to me with an issue, I think it makes a lot of sense. You know, is that something that, you know, everyone's coming at Michael from five different angles because we all have other people talking to us? Or is there a, a process by which maybe the board could say, oh, that's a really good idea. We should, that's one we should run up the flagpole, as opposed to this one, which is, you know, we can answer that ourselves.
So obviously, if it's at a board meeting, obviously, you can have that discussion very organically. If it's not at a board meeting, then you, you, you have to be careful.
Or limited.
I understand that. Be careful, right? Like, so it could be, in other words, that you theoretically could do it by yourself. You could individually call each board member and find out where they are without sharing what any of them said to you. But now you know it's something that they, that you have support for.
Yeah.
And then you could call Michael and say, I know I have support for this, I've, I've talked to people on the board. This is a good idea, we think we'd like to try it, what can we do to help? You could do it that way. The only downside to that is if four different people are doing that all four different times, and it all lands in their lap, and they don't, and you don't know what your other board member's doing either with that.
Yeah, it, it may not, the way it's happening may be the right way. I, I was wondering whether or not, again, I was, I'm thinking more about.
I, I think the best thing is, is to find some way to have some, some discretion and discipline in that process. In other words, instead of trying to have these like fast, rote rules, just have that understanding, like you said in the beginning, that, you know, if you can imagine if you worked for five different people and they all asked you to do something different, it'd be tough to triage what direction you were going to go, I think. So to recognize that, that, that when you need to call the administration, call them for something that is something that's a fairly significant issue. Or, or if it's not significant, call the board president first and say, I think this is something that we should discuss with the administration. If it's truly a board issue, but you might, I mean, also too, I don't want to find a solution for a problem that doesn't exist, because maybe you're already, maybe you're already handling it fine, you know?
I think it might give us sort of the, keep the big picture in mind and the best interest of the district as a whole. I feel like a lot of times we get very specific questions. When we're out in the community, people have questions or concerns and treat, like, knowing which one of those, obviously, if there are serious ones that are clear-cut, go right to you. There's other ones that are like, oh, that's interesting, I would also like to know the answer to that, but, you know, it's not urgent. It's not, you know, going to change anything, it's.
But the last question.
Yeah, for, you know, example, hearing that from a bench and like, look to the policies, still have some outstanding questions. Is that, so I sent that to Debbie and then forwarded on and got the answer back. Those kinds of things aren't necessarily like board decisions, they're just information. And I feel like my response to people always is to, like, point them to the appropriate person in the district they could ask to do. Like, ask the nurse, you could ask the principal, you know, that. But if people aren't either feeling like they're getting the answer they're looking for, or they're not sure of the channels, or I direct them that way, but I also want to know the answer so that if I get it again, can just say, here's where you find the information. Like, how those should be best handled, kind of, because they're small matters, not necessarily district-wide.
And remember too, like, the average person does not necessarily know exactly what your role as a board really is, right? So when they see you at the grocery store, at your kid's game, or at a restaurant in town, they walk up to you and they say, Jennifer, they have this problem, they're expecting what you're, or you're going to fix it for me, right? I mean, and then so you have to deal with that whole dynamic, which I'm sure is not the easiest conversation.
No, and I think we all have faced that, where.
Sure.
You know, we have friends who have run into issues with their, their kids. Run into issues with their their kids, um, and, you know, it's it's hard to. Um, say, look, you gotta work through the process, there's a process, um, you know. I'm here to support you, but uh, there's a process that needs to be followed and kind of keep pointing them back to the school. It's tempting to get, insert ourselves in the middle of things. But, you know, Michael has been here for how many years? Eleven, and, you know. I have yet to come across an issue that I didn't think he handled the right way. And so we, we also have to demonstrate, I think, to people that we trust our administrators, we trust Michael. We trust the process, we've got a great team. And and also, like, if if we get to an outcome that maybe seems like it wasn't the right outcome. We talk about the process, what what was the process and what do we think maybe didn't work with the process? Because um, process we can influence. If we think the process is broken, then that's a conversation we can have. But I think, you know, one of the things that spoke to me in this was, you know, to. Stay at a really high level as a board, not get into um, the day to day operations of the school. And we, I can say for myself, I have gotten in the middle of something and Michael will tell me to get back in my lane. Um, on more than one occasion, and it's just a good reminder, because, you know, you, your instinct is, let me fix this. But that's not necessarily our role to jump into that.
And it's not to be disrespectful, but and Bill's sitting here, but you also have to understand. There's a FERPA reality that even though a parent has talked to you, you don't have an educational right to some of the information that you're asking for. To be in the weeds. So you can't have access to all that information because you, just because you're a Board of Education member, doesn't mean you get to know everything there is to know. About the personally identifiable information of that child in the school district, they're not your child. So that's protected, and Bill's here, for FERPA purposes, and I try to give you. Um, very high level information, I guess is how I would describe it, but I can't tell you who, where, and how. And you don't get all of that.
And that's for our protection too.
You get a general summary of the major events is how I would describe it, but you can't have. It, this is the name of the student, this is the grade level, this is who his parents are, and this is what the circumstances are, and this is his background and whatever else happens.
The only time you'd have access to that would be if you had a legitimate need as part of your board duties.
Correct.
Typically isn't gonna happen.
Right.
I guess I just would just offer, communication, to me, it's much easier to communicate directly with someone if there's someone who's been offended with a question in a board meeting. And I don't want Mark feeling bad about asking a question if he's trying to to make sure that it's clear to the public. When when someone. Feels like maybe they've asked a question to, that could offend you all, like, we don't, we want to hear about it, I mean, I. As I was pondering what in the world was going on the last couple of days, I was thinking about my question asking, what is. Trying to get a better clarification with, what's fully, how that was defined. And it was not my intention to offend anyone, I don't know if I did, because nobody said that I did. Um, but I just think we've got to balance, you know, as board members, sounds right from our mission, right? We, the board is responsible for policy leadership and directing educational issues. And I'll jump to, you know, communication, obtaining community input and explaining board policy and decisions. And further directs the superintendent staff who carry out board education policy. So some of those, you know, I go to that latter point, directs the superintendent staff who carry out Board of Education policy. And we certainly, you know, I agree with the points that Mr. McFellin made, that we want to, pre-meet, let's try to understand. Uh, if you've got a slide that we have a question about, we can ask about that and try to get it clarified before the meeting. But we may find ourselves, like Mark did on his issue, or I did the other night, where we do have a question. And or perhaps we've got a community member who really would like to know, how did we come to this result? How did our board policy result in this presentation? And I think that's where we've got to have a balance between, um, you know, being able to represent. The residents and carrying out the objectives of the of the of the district, so, um, you know, I, I just would offer more communication. To me, if there is feedback, um, certainly I'd love to hear it firsthand and not have to react to it or find out about it. Through all sorts of means, but um, I would really appreciate that going forward, so. But again, I haven't heard anything over the past year about where somebody, question I asked was offended or put you in a bad spot, but if that's happened. Certainly I welcome a phone call or text.
I think sometimes it's delivery.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Like, if you're caught up in it, or you're upset, or whatever, I think, and I'm not speaking to just you, I'm just saying sometimes, it's just the delivery of the question. And it's, it looks, it's more, I'm attacking you than I'm really just asking a question. And again, I'm not saying you particularly, or it's just sometimes that happens, I do it sometimes.
Sometimes you may not even know you have a question until you're.
Right.
There, right, like even if you could look over something and and somebody says something to you that sparks an interest and say, oh, um. And, I don't know, I think delivery is too, I've seen people say, this might not be a fair question, because you're not prepared for it, but can you answer this? And if not, you can get back to me or something, sometimes that is a way to. Kind of soft pedal that issue, because the person up there thinks, oh my God, I don't know the answer, now I'm looking back, right? Or they're upset with me, right?
Yeah, right, good point.
I think tone can be perceived differently.
Yeah.
People are more sensitive to tones of things, and when you're already. Talking and presenting, you may be more sensitive to that too, or the energy in the room kind of shifts with sometimes questions, so it'll be gonna be. Maybe more careful in all of our choices.
Yeah, if I can just go back to my example of the cell phone, it was after one or two questions that I asked. I realized that they were being. Taken differently than I was intending them, and I think that after then the third question. My my own conclusion was, okay, I need to stop asking questions, because I was creating more of a. A dynamic that, that, you know, didn't really serve a purpose, um, that I could get those answers. Um, you know, offline, if you will, so, um, for me, it's, you know, it's, it's, um. It's, you know, reading the situation, I think Paul was, you know, alluding to. You know, or or Bill, like, having fast rules, we all have good judgment. We all have a sense of materiality and urgency, and, um. And for me, who's the, you know, second newest board member, um, it's taken me some time. You know, over a year, uh, almost two now, to sort of get that, get my stride. Uh, the way I want it to be, and and one of the big adjustments was. You know, I would always sort of describe myself prior to my board role as being someone that enjoyed rolling up my sleeves to solve problems. Um, but then, when I shifted to the board, um, you know, my engagement had to change. As well in the solving of problems, uh, and and it, you know, in some, in some ways it runs contrary to. Probably the the reason that we're all serving, which is, you know, we want to, we want to help. And, um. Uh, yeah. I I just, um, I just, you know, reflecting on my own experience. Um, I'm more, I'm still, and and I appreciate Paul's support on this. Uh, because I do read the materials before the meeting. Um, it may, when I hear hear something, I'm thinking back to, uh, the last meeting when I asked a question. Where, hearing the presentation, I kind of thought, oh, those, those two don't sort of line up. Um, I'm not sure that I would have gotten that before the meeting just from reading it, so that was an appropriate question. Uh, for for me to ask, so.
For the record, I just want to state again, we're not asking you to present every question you may have prior to the Board of Education meeting. Just want that on record, um, you should have questions from the floor. But if, when you look at it, if there's something that you want more detailed information about, if I can prepare any presenter to do that. It just strengthens the presentation that's provided to the public, because it's not clear to you, that's why you get to see it. You're five people, and I get your Board of Education members, but you're also community members and parents of the school district. So when you see it, you're looking at it through a different lens than the educators that put it together. So if it's not clear or could be improved upon, that's why we send it.
Yeah, and and that's the approach I take to reviewing it, which is, do I have something substantive? To, uh, ask a question about, or, you know, make a suggestion about.
And this is not, this is not meant to be at all antagonistic, it's just that, you know, some, most times the presentations are issued, you know, on Friday or over the weekend. But there are times when we're gonna get a presentation midday on Monday, and in that case, you know. I I may have not had a chance to go in and and look at the twenty four version of the disciplinary report. That's presented in a different way than the twenty five version of the display report, so I just, again, I I want to try to ask those questions and try to ask those in that instance that morning. But I, I'm just not always gonna have the ability to to review it over the course of the afternoon.
But that's a good example from a standpoint of timing, Paul, that we could work on from an admin perspective, that we gotta get it done by Friday. So that's not an unreasonable example to point out, that's something that I can talk about within our team to figure out. How do we ensure that it goes on on Friday and it has to be finished and we don't keep playing with it over the weekend? Or at least you get the draft of it, and I tell you in the email, we're gonna still play with slides, whatever, over the weekend, but at least then you have the the bulk versus none. But that's something we can look from a procedural standpoint.
Well, anything else on that topic?
The overall communications topic?
No, just on, um.
I got a lot, no, I'm good, I'm good.
Um, Ben, you had brought something up with me related to. How, how, what is the best way to handle a question that I might have for somebody who works for Michael? Or for someone who is in one of the school buildings? And you and I, these are things I take for granted because I've been on the board a long time, but. Um, you know. I said, I think it's best to generally go through Michael, because if we reach out directly to a principal. Um, it's probably coming across stronger than we intend. And, um, Michael, I think, should always be aware of our communications with his team. His administrators, his, his staff, just so that he's aware of of board activity. And you can piggyback a little bit on that, Michael.
Yeah, I would agree, so I've asked for this in the past, and it's really no different than what we're currently practicing. That generally you're gonna facilitate through things through me, and then I will get them to the appropriate admin. Depending on the conversation Lori, Ken, Becky, or I have, um, depending on what the topic is, um, of who's gonna answer that. And then they may be the person that responds to you, and they respond though, I will be copied on it, so I know what the response is. Sometimes we go gathering information, we get it back to you because it's faster, because it's coming from two or three sources in the school district. To make it more efficient for you, I don't want two or three people trying to respond to that, we collect the information, then we send it back. But it's good, and this is where I would go back to, if you're doing that and I don't know about it. Jen's not gonna get the benefit of that if John's the one that asked the question, so that doesn't get shared with anyone else. And that's part of the building the capacity piece is, when I know about it, I then can tell everybody else, this was a question that was asked, and here's the information in case you're curious. Want to know, or someday hit your radar, um, because Jen's a good example of that, where we just recently had an exchange about a a medical relationship. With Lice, so the question was very specific to Lice, and Jen mentioned it, as did Debbie. So Lori did the research on it, because it was gonna come from two or three different sources, instead of having each person do that. We collected it, so then we can then push it out.
Well, and I I know we try not to burden Michael, but.
It's not a burden.
This is not a burden, this is like, he would prefer to know.
I would prefer to know.
Yeah, and he's made that clear with me, I haven't always been.
Yeah.
Mindful of making that clear, like with you or with Mark, um, because you're new, I, it's something I've taken for granted. But I think it's a good thing to reiterate that, um, it's just a courtesy to Michael to let him know.
It also leads to other conversations, and I'll just use cabinet as an example, so when, I'll just use, and it's a horrible topic, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Life under the health conditions piece on the school website, but it leads to, okay, um, where is that information? And is it easy to find? And if it's not easy to find, and you have to drill down through fifteen webpages as an example, we have to change that. So it leads to the opportunity, when the question is raised, if you're asking on behalf of a community member. First, I would tell you, encourage the community member to contact us directly, but if they don't choose to do that, we'll still give you the information. But it then leads to other conversations about the improvement piece, while Jen tried to find this after she was asked the question, and she couldn't find it. So then that's two people called parents in the school district that couldn't find something, so then we need to try to figure out, well, how do we change that? Or is it not clear to people? Where do we communicate that? Is it in the back to school information? Is it on the school district websites? Is it on the webpages? Is it in the building webpage or the district webpage? Both, so we actually go through that conversation because the topic was raised. And that happens more often than not, I mean, when you really, because there's, the questions you ask typically are seeking information that someone can't find. That's normally where this ends up in a discussion. Most of the questions I get from you as individual board members generally are information seeking on specific. And then that leads to that conversation with the admin team, and then the communications department to talk about it. So that's why I think it's beneficial that I do know about it, because I don't think it's just. You seeking the information, I look at it from the lens that it could benefit a bigger people that they can't find that information.
So I have a question, so just over the years, there's been certain things that I've had cut. Either I have a personal question or a question from a resident, and I email it to you. Over the years, as I've gotten to know Lori, Ken's come on board, obviously, Becky from a financial perspective. There's areas of expertise that we sort of know people have oversett it. Do you always want it to go directly to you and then you send it out?
My preference is it would come to me, because what ends up happening, and it's not to be disrespectful. It's not just the four of us that end up getting involved in the conversation, so then you're involved in a conversation with the building principal that we don't know about. So that doesn't automatically come back to me, so it does, because that's the directive they've been given, that, you know, at any point in time. If you're having conversations with a Board of Education member, I need to know, because we need to understand what we need to do differently to try to fulfill that expectation in the school district. So it's easier when I'm the conduit, that then we make sure. That we give it to the right people, because it may not just be one person that's involved in something, and that's where we then try to figure out, okay, who does this touch? Because it could be two or three people deep by the time we get there, it's just easier if you give it to me and then we can facilitate giving it back.
So do you want them copied on it for guessing, or just?
No, just send it to me. It's just easier not to guess.
What if you're on vacation?
Then it goes to Lori as the next point person in Ken, so that's how this works, I mean, here's the hierarchy right here with Becky on the finance side. Um, Ken's in our business and operations, Lori's teaching and learning, so if I'm not here and I'm on vacation.
Anytime it goes to Lori second, just, I mean, I just want to make sure.
Except business and ops, I would tell you. Yeah, so teaching and learning, business operation.
I just want to make sure that it's a.
This is it, right here, finance, teaching and learning, business ops.
Even if it's not financial, you know me, I'll track them down. She knows, I know where to find them.
That's what happens with me, Becky comes to find me.
And I think, you know, related to that, along those lines is, you know, if if we're gonna be in a school building. Um, it's good to let Michael know, because sometimes, I mean, I know you're there for volunteer reasons. Um, but if it's outside of that, um, if you wanna have a chat with a principal. Um, it's good to let Michael know that that's what you'd like to do, because otherwise it sends off all kinds of. Like, why is that board member asking for a meeting with me, or why are they cruising around my building today? You know, it just avoids, I don't know, Ken, you could probably speak to that a little bit. In terms of like, it can be disruptive potentially to have one of us just show up and and you not be aware why we're there or what we're.
Yeah, especially if it's unannounced, I would say.
Yeah.
You are questioning why that's happening, especially you don't know if Michael knows or not.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's a big piece of it.
I would say the one exception to that is your role function or responsibilities of parent.
Yeah.
So when you are in the school district and you're in in your parent role, you're a parent, go be a parent all day long. But if you're wearing your board member hat, then that's a different conversation.
And try to keep your parent hat on, if you're here as a parent.
Yeah, and it's hard to separate that stuff, it is, but that's what people are watching for, is to see. Okay, are you asking me that question as a parent, or are you asking me these questions as a Board of Education member? So you don't know how to differentiate that. Everyone that looks at you looks at you as a board member, is that fair to you? Probably not, but that's the lens they look at.
Yeah, I feel like I try to make that clear, because I felt, you know, have the most younger kids, um, in the schools currently, so if I'm there to look at the lost and found. I try to be very cut off, it's like, I'm here, I've asked my kid three times to find a coat, I'm just. I'm just going to lost and found, you know, and they'll be like, I'm just here as a parent, like not that explicitly, but I try to make it clear like this is my purpose and then I am leaving, you know, because I know that that could potentially be interpretive and be disruptive.
And you're welcome to be here. You understand that.
Appreciate that, but then we all, we all approach this a different way. I, the way I look at this is we are not special people. We're no different than anyone else, but we do have a title. And that title changes how people look at us, whether we like it or not. And I think the appropriate way, my opinion, as a board member is to, to be very self-aware. And, you know, my kids are almost gone through the system, but the practice I've always had personally, and I think, tell me, maybe I wasn't this way, um. I probably could have and should have advocated for my kids more at times, but didn't because I felt that wasn't my role. As, because people would perceive it differently because I'm a board member. So.
You don't want people thinking.
I didn't want, I didn't want people ever thinking that. No special treatment. And maybe that's, maybe I spent less time in the buildings because maybe, you know, there's probably things I could have done more. Um, but you know, it's a sacrifice for the role that we have to, to help lead this district. Um, I just think in my view, that's an appropriate thing for us to do. Now, you're really the one who has to deal with it the most. Oh, um, and I would never say don't advocate for your kids. That's not what I mean, but I just think we have to be very cognizant of that. And frankly, I think for my kids, I, I'm not sure how people felt about them when they were in their classroom, but I think it forced them to, you know, be stronger advocates for themselves because they knew they were going to have dad swooping in to try to help them out. Again, I think it just, it just goes with, you know, the role that we want to have here. Um, and I think with that role, great, what is the Superman or Spider-Man? We have responsibility, right? And I think sometimes it means you have to be, you have to step back a little bit.
I appreciate you saying that because I have struggled with that. I feel like often on the year, like if I wasn't in this role, I probably would have asked a principal this question, but I held off being like, you know what? I don't want that to be perceived. So I, I'm glad to hear that I wasn't the only one who like internally struggled with that and figure out, um, the balance of doing what you would normally do as a parent, um, with that extra lens, figuring out what's appropriate.
I think your practice of saying, oh, like announcing while you're there probably helps a great deal, like lowering the level of anxiety, right? If you say, I'm just here for this or that, then they know exactly what you're doing there. They know you're in it as a parent. And I think that probably is a good idea or a good practice to engage in.
And Jen's been super involved in the school from before, um, with P D O and, and probably room parent. Um, and so she's, she's been in the classroom a ton. Um, so I think it is particularly challenging for you, um, balancing, you know, wanting to be volunteering a lot, but also, you know, knowing you're a board member.
I think the other thing to reinforce, and it goes back to your leadership role as Board of Education members, and we talk about this amongst the admin team. But like, let's just say you're in the building and it switches from Jen's in parent mode to now I want to have a conversation with you as the board member. And it really goes back to, and Debbie used the lane and she teased me about it because when, and it doesn't happen often, but when she used the characterization, I reminded her of her lane. So, you know, technically your role as Board of Education is to govern the school district, administer policy for enactment purposes, hire, fire, and evaluate superintendent treasurer. When they get into the questions, like, and I'm just using something absurd about the room temperature, that's not yours to fix. You need to redirect. That's not my lane and you should go talk to your building administration or the district administration because that's their job. It's not mine. So it's just reminding people from a leadership perspective, because you're all leaders, um, to redirect them back to where they should go because that's not your role to become that person that comes and say, hey, listen, I was in the green hallway today and three people told me they didn't like it because it was seventy degrees today because the sun was on their side of the building and why can't we turn on the air conditioning? So that's not your job and they shouldn't be doing that to you. I, it's absurd. I'm just using as an example. It did happen, but if it did happen, they shouldn't do that to you.
So it sounded pretty specific.
That's because my conference room today was seventy-eight degrees for some reason, when twelve people were in it for construction meetings and the air conditioner wouldn't kick on. So it just kept getting hotter and hotter and hotter in the room. So air conditioning was on.
That's a good point. Sometimes it's, it's the.
Yeah, so here, still waiting for my tow truck.
Right, yeah. And it's not fair to you. I'm not saying any of this is, but it's just not.
Well, and this, this is probably where it gets a little sticky. Um, did we lose?
Mark, you there?
I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah.
It's reminding me a little.
And I don't have any, I don't have any specific examples of this. So, um, you know, I, this, this main, I'm just guessing it has happened because I've been around in the district for a while. Coming to us and having someone come to us to talk about seventy degrees in the, you know, always one thing from a teacher perspective. There's the other perspective and I get, and, and Mr. Newoff brought it up as part of our mission, which is to get community feedback. But when a, when a community member comes to us with a issue, that's very specific. You know, I think there's also a role that we should not play in that.
They, I would tell you to redirect them back to the administration and Debbie and I had this conversation several times.
All the time.
Um, for people that will email or call. Um, and for whatever reason, right or wrong, Debbie's board president, she's at the top of the screen. They pick the first email and they send. It's just what happens, but then it comes to me and we have a conversation. And then when I respond, I said, in the future, would you please direct your emails on these topics to me?
But, but I, just to be clear though, I, that does not mean that we're, that we're, I'm not saying that we say to the community, don't talk to us. Or don't bring your issues to us. But I, I, I just think that there, we have to set expectations with people to say, you know, I, I appreciate you bringing this to me. I will let someone know and then, or you need to call.
Or I'll have someone to follow up with.
Or yes, or I'll have someone reach out to you. It's just, I, I want, I just want people to understand it's not that we don't want, it's not that we aren't trying to do our job, but that's not our job. Um, our job is to bring the concerns. Our job is not to solve.
And I think it undermines Michael and the team if we go about, you know, getting in the middle of trying to solve a specific issue.
Look, we all have.
And I think there's a, a, going to be, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, sorry. We all have friends. We all have acquaintances. I mean, we live in this community, right? So we're going to get it. Um, and I, I think that's totally fine. I just, I, and it's a hard thing sometimes to say to someone that you know, no.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, as long as we, as long as we hopefully understand what the process is. And I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, you know, again, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to forward this to superintendent. I'll make sure they get back to you. And to, to some degree, even say, did you get a follow-up call?
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Um, but we have, I think we'd be very careful about the lines that we're, you know. And again, maybe I'm ultra-conservative on this kind of stuff, but I think whether it's engaging with teachers in the classroom or engaging with community members, the board has a defined responsibility and we need to stick to it.
Can you weigh in on best practice there?
Well, I think exactly the way you guys angle at this, to exactly that, to what you said, is to, if it's an issue like that, refer to the administration. If you want to look like you're doing your job to say, let me know if you don't, if it doesn't get resolved, please get back to me. I might've sent it to the wrong place.
Right. The other piece, and I'll just reminder this and Bill can speak to it, but, and it's not to say that this happens, but it could happen. Um, we are not permitted to direct deal. By that I mean, the Plainlet Local Education Association is the association for teachers within the school district for collective bargaining purposes for terms and conditions of employment. Um, they are governed by plea. They have to adhere to plea. The O P C personnel or the non-teaching staff within the school district, similarly, you can't direct deal. So even though, let's just pretend Jen's a teacher and she's asking me a question and she's talking about terms and conditions, I shouldn't engage with her in that conversation because I'm not allowed to direct deal with Jen because it becomes unfair labor practice. So there's a repercussion that comes from that legally that can be filed by the association against the school district because Jen is direct dealing. So I can't go and basically discuss terms and conditions with the teacher. So we go straight to the union when we're doing that. We have, we're currently doing that now. And a conversation with Joe based upon a grant that's coming out from the state. So we're having those conversations, but it's got to go through Joe because he's the association president. I can't go to what will end up being probably three teachers that may benefit from this because it's direct dealing. And they don't look at it that way. They just think that I will, I have an opportunity to talk to Jen. She's a board member. So I want to tell her what I think and this is what you should do. And this is what it should be. And this is what I deserve and all that. I'm not saying the person may not be right, but you can't do that. There's a process in place that we have to follow by your agreements with the association. Yeah, and they're bound by that same process, but an individual teacher may not understand or be aware of that.
It's complicated.
What else? Anything else on boardsmanship?
I think it's going back to the inquiries we get from the community. I mean, sometimes they want to go to the board because they feel like what's being administered by the administration is not appropriate, given perhaps they've even reviewed board policies and so they want to get to Michael, right? So, or Michael or the team. So I think that's one where that as a board member, that's probably our toughest spot because we've got a community member questioning the direction of the district based upon how they think it should be going based upon the policy. So again, I just want to lay that out there. That doesn't mean that that's someone advocating for a particular constituent or student or teacher or rather, um, parent, but that's saying, okay, do we have the way we're administering things is that in accordance with board policy? And I think that's just, I want to be mention that because I don't want that to be distinguished from, oh, we're going to bad for one particular individual. But that person may be raising a valid conservative. We're going to at least try to address it with, with you all as the leaders of the district.
And I'm fine with that because it's directly related to board policy that you're responsible to govern.
Yeah, that makes sense because then it's, it's something that is, if there's a question about how, you know, how something is interpreted, then I think that's worthy of discussion, right? Um, the question is then, how is that? How does that get handled? Right? Is it a, is that something that from an administrative standpoint, you review administrative guidelines or is it, is it a discussion about, well, maybe this policy needs some different language?
It's kind of ending both. We start with the policy and then see if there's something in the policy that does or doesn't need to change. Then look at administrative guidelines basically to enact the policy. Um, so that can be changed. Policy has its policy process. Administrative guidelines we can change tomorrow.
But in a lot of cases, board policy, I mean, we, we adopt board policy. A lot of that is, I wouldn't want to say boilerplate, but we get, yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's not boilerplate. Just ask, just ask Jen and me.
I know, I know, I, I didn't, I didn't have the right word. Sorry, Mark. Wait. I told you, Mark, there's twenty-six more coming your way.
I know.
All right, um, this was a good discussion. Uh, let's move on to just talking board communication. Um, Michael, I think before I turn it to Bill, um, you want to confirm kind of the chain of communication?
My question to Debbie in preparation for the retreat tonight is the same question I asked last year relative to your preferences for communication. And we can investigate, um, looking for um, an app that could facilitate Bill's idea. We'll look at that through the communication department and see there, it's a new idea that could be presented that we can investigate. But what else, if anything, do we need to be doing better? The better meet your need, Board of Education members, um, either for me as the superintendent or Becky as the treasurer. But at the end of the day, we're the two people that report to you. Everyone else reports to me. Um, but we need to facilitate communication with you. You do it amongst yourselves, but for our purposes, is there anything that would be better for you? So the app was brought up as a potential something to look at. Um, is there anything else that you would like to have that we're not doing that would be better for you? Board members, I'm open to what that is. You just need to tell me what it is so I can confirm that that's what the majority of people would like. If it's an individual something, you need to also tell me that and I'll do my best to facilitate that with you individually to meet your personal. And it doesn't have to be tonight. You can think.
I'll go first. So Michael, I, we were having a little bit of a laugh about that policy review. But as I was, you know, looking at them, I, and trying to understand, you know, what they were, there was a whole section of policy updates that are related to, uh, federal grants. And, you know, so the changes I imagine were being, uh, recommended to be in compliance with changes in law. Um, so, you know, if I'm looking at those, I have, you know, I have that in mind. These, of these policies are being amended to, uh, comply with federal law. And maybe even additionally, council has confirmed that these changes now uh, make us or can, we continue to be in compliance, right? So it was a little bit of background on that. And then so for other policies where it's maybe not self-evident, you know, the, uh, a sentence or two, this is why this change is being made. Um, and that, for me at least, informs my review of it. Because now I'm thinking, is it, I'm evaluating the change as, is it meeting the objective? As, as, that's been told to me. So, um, I want to do a good job when I review the policies. And other than essentially, you know, reading them, um, a, and seeing what the changes are, sort of knowing why they're being made is, um, I think important for the reviewer. Um, and it, it probably, it, it, it probably would have aided me particularly on the federal grants review, uh, to just know, you know, these changes are being done to comply with federal law, not any other reason, um, or that, that's the good reason that they're being, they're being done. So I don't have to review that with an eye towards, are these changes complying with federal law? I've been, you know, I've been told that they, they do.
Mark, using it as an example, I think next week when you, Jen and I meet for policy committee, we can talk about how to restructure that work um, to try to help facilitate that conversation differently to meet that need. I have a few ideas. I don't think we have to go into detail about that here. We're meeting next week for policy. Um, but I think we can talk about that. Where I would make the extension though, is back to the board. So at the Board of Education meeting, um, we don't go through every single word change on every single policy. I hit a highlight. I'll say it's federal. I'll say it's statutory. We'll talk about some specific topics when it's new, but we don't go through paragraphs, paragraph, word by word. You get the markup in the board agenda after it's gone through this process. So I just want confirmation. Um, after it comes out of the policy work with Jen and Mark and it gets actually finished and we put it on the agenda for first reading and then it goes back to second. Do you want something changed at the board meeting? So I'm going to take Mark's idea that applied to the board meetings. What hits agenda? Do you want me to spend more time going through detail? Is there something that would be better for you? Cause I don't go through the markup version at the meeting, word for word. I don't do that. Do you want more sentences about each policy to give more context behind it? Cause I can do that. I just have to understand it. But it may not be me, it may be Jen and Mark. We can talk about that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I feel like it's sort of been coming on us as the policy committee. Thinking like, hey, this one might be something you guys want to read for yourself warmed up. The rest are kind of standard changes. I wouldn't, you know, and that, that there has to be a level of trust there, you know, obviously if there isn't, everybody has all of them. They can read them for themselves, but knowing that we'll point out anything that seems like noteworthy, um, that maybe people will have an opinion on, um, outside of us and that they would want to spend a little more time.
We could do a Cliff Notes summary.
Cause so much, so much of your part, like you said, well,
So much of your part, like you said, boilerplate predetermined. So many of these policies are. The law says you have to have a policy on this, whether it be state law or federal law. And there's not a lot of discretion. There's not much choice, right? So you just, you put that down, but there are times when. You do have choices, right? Like, let's say a good example could be something like open enrollment. You have, you have to have a policy in open enrollment, but you could choose what that policy looks like and what, what you're, what you have parameters you can set. Or there's lots of policies like that where you have to have a policy, but you can choose different things. So it might be good when you have one of those things where there's a deal of discretion involved. For you all, when you get to the board to say, okay, of the twelve policies you have in front of you. We have some comments on these four. These were four were discretionary and there were some choices we had to make. This is kind of how we made our choice. And here's the context and the, and the rationale for our choices. Uh, but do that with everyone, probably be. Not a very efficient time. There's so many MLR predetermined. Yeah, I think as long as, I, it would be nice to. I, I think what we do now is fine. It would be nice to probably have a. A bit more detail to your point, which is. These policies, policies. Whatever policy X, Y, Z. Just, these are standard changes just to make us in compliance with, with changes in state law. That's all those are. But here. This, you know, this was the language that was changed or this was the, of the choices that we had. This is the one that was, that we're recommending. Though, you know, and my, I think we could sort of do that now, but. I kind of like the idea of. Of also having Jen and Mark do it, uh, just because breaks up the meeting and.
Well, it is your, probably your, your primary.
And I think when it impacts, um, a major change in. Something related to student life. Benefits of a day for discussion.
So if you remember during COVID, we had lots of policy discussions. So, so that was one of those were ones that required input and a great deal of discretion.
It's a good example, Mark. Thank you.
Mark, anything else on that topic? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Bill for a legislative update.
Okay, um. So, um, on your, your document there, I think Michael has some folders that he was going to pass out with us and this information for you.
Can you just hold it up to the camera for me?
Mark, I will get your stuff.
Can you read it from here, Mark?
Oh, yes, of course.
So, Mark, I don't think you'll need it, Mark, because I think it's, it's mostly background, I think, information. So really, if you look at legislative update there, um. Item four A and item four C are, are, are pretty closely related. Um, and so I think I'm going to kind of address those kind of together, um, in one package here. As many of you know, effective February twenty fifth, um, Senate Bill one oh four, which was passed by both, both houses, the state legislature and signed by the governor. Um, now requires, um, for multiple occupancy bathrooms, that they must be single sex bathrooms. And in both K through twelve and in higher education, you're only able to use the bathroom by which you were biologically. Biologically entered this world. So in Ohio, that'd be what your birth certificate says. Um, and you can no longer, um. Based on any kind of transgender issues or whatever, use a bathroom that you're not biologically predisposed to use. Uh, that is different than some districts' policies. And it's also, um, different than probably the latest federal guidelines we had. And that's why. Title nine kind of also impacts this. So I'm going to give you a little bit of a, a background and maybe way too much information than you want, but I think it's important if you don't understand this, especially if people ask you questions about this. And obviously I understand that people have strong feelings about this issue. There are a lot of people on different sides. I'm just trying to, to like stay right on the lane of what the law is, right? Because that's what I've tried to do. I'd say probably in the, this is my thirty first year, this has probably been the single most difficult issue. That I've had, when I would say anybody in my firm has had. And trying to give good, solid advice for us. And that's because a lot of times you want to kind of know what's the law. And I think of those of you who are here when I first interviewed, I think John, you might have been in the room. Do you remember my three-legged chair analogy? So. I, I, I live in a world of allergies. It's probably my grandfather's fault, but, um. When I looked at representing a public entity, it's different than when I represent a private entity. I don't represent many private entities. It's mostly over just in the public arena. But one leg of that chair is what does the law say? Right? Are we, are we right? Are we wrong? Are we righteous? Or are we on the wrong, right side of the law? Sometimes that's very clear. Sometimes it's not. And that's the first thing we have to look at. Um, and the interesting thing about this is not all of these, that there's no, there's no descending order. All three of these things have, can have equal weight, different weight depending issue. Um, the second issue is what is it cost to be right or wrong? And cost has, it has lots of different, um, facets. One is obviously you have legal costs. There's a bill there. But there's a cost to the organization. You know, we get into litigation, your administration is caught up in discovery requests, finding documents, sitting through depositions. You know, just disruption to the situation, the anxiety that can bring to an organization. Um, so there's a, a real, sometimes it's you. I mean, I've been in situations where board members are being opposed in litigation. So there's that cost. And then the third item or the third leg of the chair really is what is a community interest or the public relations interest? Or what is your, what, how do you look at the decisions you're making related to this issue? And how does it impact? What you believe your constituents want, because ultimately you're elected officials. You may not want to admit that you're politicians. You can call yourself one or not, but you are elected officials, right? So in any one of those issues, any one of those items could have a different level, level of weight depending on whatever the issue is we're dealing with. Um, I have been in situations where let's say you've had a student discipline issue. Where, um, you know, we might not have been in the greatest place in the world as to whether or not we had the right to suspend a student or expel a student. But there were so many other issues that were so greater than that, that we had to make some kind of decision to remove that student from the building for even a short period of time. To, to prevent maybe hysteria in the community. Um, I had an issue one time where there was a, a large, um. Uh, drug operation, selling operation that happened and we weren't sure if we actually could get the evidence that the student actually did it at school. But we went ahead and suspended and then dealt with it later in the court. So sometimes that happens, right?
Not in New Orleans, right, Bill? Not in New Orleans.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm just using that as an example. Um, but there are also some times when, um. We might, you know, that, that. We might be completely right. But the issue in the big scheme of things is minor and it's not worth the cost we're dealing with. So we'll find some way to resolve it because the cost doesn't work to the organization. So we do that all the time as well. Um, this was you was a really, and this issue was a problem because all three of those items could go either direction. And when I say that is if you, you know, the transgender issues really started to becoming issue under title nine under the Obama administration. And that was because the Obama administration through the Department of Education's, um, they have a, a section in the Department of Education called the Office. For Civil Rights, a Department of Education. Well, they were interpreting title nine, um, when it has the word sex, meaning you can't discriminate in the educational world based on sex. They interpreted the word sex to include gender identification and sexual orientation. And so once they made that decision to include that that would be part of a title nine discrimination case. They kind of turned title nine on its head because prior to that, when title nine was first enacted in the seventies, it very much dealt with. Educational opportunities in the sense of. You know, you saw it at the universities. Well, if we were given three hundred, three hundred scholarships by the time you add all the male sports. You need to have three hundred scholarships for the females. And it became a problem because you had a hundred scholarships for the football team. So they had to cut male sports to get balance, right? Or they had to create new female sports or. You know, the, 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 the football, the baseball stadium was the Taj Mahal, but the women's softball field was. You know, a sandlot, right? So they had to do things to make that, to make that happen. Well, the Obama administration looked at it and said, we think that this applies to that. And they gave, and because it is an administrative function. They gave guidance to the Office of Civil Rights to say, if there are complaints based on this and a student is being treated differently because of their gender identification or their sexual orientation. We think that's discrimination. For the end of the Obama administration, there was actually a letter that was published and that was a joint letter between the Department of Education and the Department of Justice. Literally, it was like the last few weeks of the Obama administration where they clearly like came out and said. We're giving you strong guidance. If you're, if you're, if you're not following this guidance and you're not complying. You will be considered to be a violation and potentially you could lose federal funding. And it had a lot of impact because it became from the Department of Justice because. The Department of Education can't take federal funding. All they can do is file a complaint with the Department of Justice who has to then have to take action, due process to take money away from workers. Well, in two thousand sixteen, the Trump administration came in and they pretty much said. No, we're not going to interpret it that way. And, um, and then all of a sudden we didn't have any enforcement issues happening from the Office of Civil Rights. Right around this time when all this was happening to you, you might remember the case at Duke University. Where there, there were a bunch of lacrosse players who were, um, alleged to have sexually assaulted a female student on campus. There was a complaint filed through their title nine organization, the, 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 most of the players were. Were, were charged with criminal complaints. They were dismissed from the university, expelled from the university. I think there might have been some civil suits involved as well. Um, and as that case transpired and went through the court system, right towards the end of, after all that had happened. The woman had recanted her story and indicated that she had been lying. So as a result of that, there was a lot of pushback on, wait a minute, what? Do the victims have any rights in title, not the victims, but the alleged persecutors have any rights in title nine allegations, allegations? Because it looked like. Things were just getting pushed right through with whoever was being accused of something didn't have like their fair, their fair time at court. Because their court was basically an administrative hearing at the university. So in twenty twenty. We passed new regulations for title nine. Those regulations were really built during the Trump administration. And it was to provide more due process, for lack of a better word, for the people who have been accused. Now, it has created a great deal of problems in the K through twelve world because it was really written in the idea that you'd be at a large university or college. We'd have a lot of different layers of administration. You probably can manage it here in New Albany, your size, but let me tell you, there are some tiny school districts that don't have the ability to do this. So when that, when that happens, they got to go outside and bring people in because that's the only way they can meet the cumbersome requirements of the law. So, and the Biden administration comes in, Biden administration comes in and says, we're telling. The OCR, Office of Civil Rights, that we're going back to the interpretation during the Obama administration. And we are listening to you schools and we understand that this regulation is horribly cumbersome. So we are going to streamline the investigation process, still protect. Rights of the victim and, and the alleged persecutor, but we're going to make it more streamlined. We understand this is not workable in the K through twelve world. And they were right about that. But when they changed the regulation, which became effective in twenty twenty four. They also specifically now for the very first time wrote in writing in the regulation. That sex in title nine includes gender discrimination and includes sexual orientation discrimination. Prior to that, it had never really been written anywhere. It was just an interpretation, I think, at the, at the administrative level. Then the lawsuits started to fly, right? Yeah, I might be telling you way too much. I've kind of given you a law school class. But I think it's important for you to know this because it's how we got here. People don't realize. Um, right around the same time that that happened, this was going on. Um, and the lawsuits start to hit, there's a doctrine in administrative law called the Chevron doctrine, which basically says. An administrative agency at the federal level has great deference in how they interpret a statute. Their regulations basically are, are primo unless you can find that they're unreasonable or capricious, which is a really hard standard. Well, the Supreme Court struck the Chevron doctrine and said, no, that's unconstitutional. It should be what the law says. Right at the same time now, you have these court, these cases going through the courts on what title nine means and they just struck that doctrine. So there's a case called Cardona, which applies in Ohio, in Ohio, Kentucky, West Virginia and Michigan. It's a weird combination, but it's how the plaintiffs all align. That says now that, that title nine's two thousand twenty four regulations are permanently enjoined. On those states, which means that our regulations are the twenty twenty regulations. But remember, the twenty twenty regulations were still being interpreted by the Obama and Biden administration is still including. The interpretation of what sex means. And then on top of all those one oh four hits, that says in Ohio, this is our law. So as you can tell, the reason why I go through that whole thing is you see how hard it's been to give advice on this issue. And, and also how regardless of what side of the fence you are on this issue, you can find something to back your story. You can hold on, you can, you can hook on to something that says, this is why I'm right and this is why you're wrong vice versa. The advice that, that we are giving now is that, that follow, it's follow Senate Bill one oh four, of when it becomes effective in February. Um, this month, because in really, if you look at that whole, you know, where I've gotten and you look at where. The Trump administration is now and the fact that that regulation doesn't apply to us. We believe that I, we'd rather be dealing with someone. This is where I talked to you about the, the first leg of the, of the chair. We would rather think at this point, given the nature of what's happening in the Trump administration. Fact that today, I think they were talking about eliminating the Department of Education, that. Your safest place right now is to follow one oh four until, until otherwise. But I can't tell you with one hundred percent certainty that someone can't come up here and say, well, that's not right, Mr. Dieters. Because we still don't have anything official from the Trump administration that says the twenty twenty interpretation is not correct. So does that make complete sense out of something that has no ability to make sense? But that's kind of where we are. So the advice that we're giving is to try to just be as practical as we can at this point. Said, if I'm going to pick what side of, of the world I would want to defend at this point. I would want to defend that we're following one oh four and not that we're violating one oh four. You also have the issue of because of that's teachers licenses and administrative licenses. If we're not following that, that's potentially considered to be a complaint that could be filed against their teaching license or their administrative license. And that's the safest place for us to be right now. Ultimately, it's still your decision. It's a policy. So you, you, you guys kind of make that choice, right? I do know in that packet that Michael is sending to Jennifer and Mark that there is a policy in there. That, um, we actually are one of the law firms. He only has two law firms in Ohio that writes policies for him. We're one of them. And, and I know that that policy does say to follow one oh four.
So from a practical standpoint, um, when Debbie and I did prep to prepare for the retreat agenda and I talked to Bill. Um, Senate Bill one oh four becomes effective in the state of Ohio based upon signature of the governor, February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. That's the effective date. So there's two components in it. The first is college credit plus, which the original purpose of Senate Bill one oh four. That then got tagged with the bathroom bill, which is basically what it's fondly known as in the state of Ohio. So, um, we have to basically enact the policy. And this is where to go back to Jen and Mark and it'll be basically put onto your February twenty fourth agenda. Because it has to hit on the twenty fourth to verify we're in line with the policy requirement effective February twenty fifth. Practically within the school district, it's really targeting, when you get into the nuances of, um, Senate Bill one oh four. It's multi occupancy facilities for restroom purposes. That's what it's targeting. So it basically goes back to your biological sex at birth based upon your birth certificate on or about your birth. That honors what your biological sex is. And then in a multi-use facility. Um, in a school district, you can't use multi-use facilities. And in our case, it would go down the path of a restroom, a locker room, a changing room, a shower room. That's accessible to multiple individuals at one time. So that's the first prong is the bathroom. So we don't have multi-use facilities that are unisex in nature. So we don't have that in the school district. We have male, female, boys, girls. That's what exists. The unisex restrooms are either staff restrooms or single use restrooms that just say unisex. So we believe from the school district perspective and talking to Bill and going through the compliance procedures, we're fine on the restrooms. Because we don't have any restrooms that violate the new requirements in Senate Bill one oh four. Um, so we think we're okay there. Um, the second prong, and Bill and I and Lori have talked about this at length, um, because it's in Senate Bill one oh four. In addition, school districts may not permit students of the opposite sex to share overnight accommodation. So in the past, in working with students and families, we've made exceptions on overnight school field trips. Um, band camp, out of state, DC, EF tours, all those types of field trips we do with kids. We've worked with students based upon, um, room assignments to make exceptions. Senate Bill one oh four now prohibits that. So we are enacting changes that will begin in February. Because there is an overnight student field trip that will be impacted where we're working specifically with the family and the student. To explain the change in Ohio law and what now we're required to do.
We've been talking about siblings? What are you talking about in terms of?
No, we're talking about gender identity.
Like if you had a band go to a competition.
Right.
We used to allow, if you had one, one of those students that's transgender and. Another student's parents were, were comfortable with a person of such. Identified sex. identified sex, which is different biologically to be able to share a room, can't do that.
Right. That accommodations existed previously in the school district based upon Title Nine. That's where Bill gave you his lecture and lesson on Title Nine. This is now in conflict. So we will follow Ohio revise code based upon the enactment of Senate Bill one oh four um, based upon our conversations with Bill because that's what Bill's told us to do.
It's the exact opposite of where we were before. Before, if you would have had a biological male person who is identifying female and then another female student was willing to to um stay with them and the other parents, students' parents were willing to agree to it. We didn't make that accommodation. We would have been looked at as in violation of the statute.
Before, we've empowered the parents to make the decision with the students. And now we can't do that. So we don't have the ability to do that based upon Bill's recommendations legally. This will come, and I'm just gonna say it this way, because it's what it is, because Bill and I have talked about it, and he mentioned it. Um, this comes to the board because you have to enact the policy to give us the direction because we're licensed in the state of Ohio. It's illegal for me to violate Ohio revise code. It's a crime. If I commit a crime by violating the law, my license is in jeopardy and I can be sanctioned or otherwise by the Ohio Department of Education workforce. So you have to, as a Board of Education, provide the direction through policy as to what we're enacting in the school district because all the administrators and teachers have license in the school district from a licensure perspective, and we have to be compliant. Now, to where Bill went, and I'm not saying you're going to do this, but this is what you have at the local control level. This is the, the law in the state of Ohio, and Bill can tell you, there's conversations going on in other school districts across the state where they're not going to do that. They're going to enact a different policy. And that's a decision the Board of Education makes. It's not a decision I make. So policy governance is yours, but in this particular case, because licensure is tied to the administrators and the teachers in the school district, you have to tell us what you want. Because we have to do whatever you say, and then if you choose to walk a different path, we're doing it under the direction of the Board of Education based upon your consultation with legal counsel. So this is coming to Mark and Jen, so welcome to next Wednesday. You got a preview. Um, this is one of the seven that's in a fast track mode because of how they're changing legislation in the state. So this will come forth and then it will be recommended. Um, and you'll get access to this information prior to February twenty fourth, but it's going to be on your agenda. Any questions about Senate Bill one oh four?
Uh, Michael, what is our uh, communication plan?
We haven't finalized that yet, so that's the coming attraction, Mark.
Sure, okay.
So I know that that's, that is still a little relatively unclear. Um, I would, if you have any interest in this issue and you just either like falling asleep in the evening for because you're reading, it makes you fall asleep better, or you just like reading court cases, which I tend to keep out on and do. The Cardona case, which is, there's two, there's two cases there. There's the preliminary injunction and the permanent injunction. It's just C A R D O N A. Um, the judge does, I think, an amazing, amazing job of setting forth the history of how we've got, how we've arrived, the place that we've arrived on this legal issue. And looking at the legislative history of Title Nine and and coming up with the argument that in his opinion, that that court, again, it's only a district court, it hasn't gone to court of appeals yet. And in his opinion, the legislature did not deter, did not intend for the word sex to include gender as it's related to the Title Nine interpretation. That's why he struck down the two thousand twenty four regulations.
There's also a case in the Sixth Circuit with Bethel, and there's a Supreme Court case that's pending ruling in the summer that could have implications, but until that stuff goes through the legal process, Bill's recommendation and conversations with us, despite all of that is to enact Senate Bill one oh four. House of eight, you do a high level.
Um, yeah, the Parents' Bill of Rights. Um, so somebody may also know about the Parents' Bill of Rights, and there's a lot of, a lot in there, basically. In a nutshell, they said that it's indicating that they believe parents have a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the education and care of their children in schools. So where I think this really comes down for us is, you know, a lot of these things are already applied with whether that that sexuality content must be age appropriate, and then we notify parents of those types of things. A lot of these things are already doing. But what, what really comes, I think, in, and it's in the sort of the middle of, of documents. It says that we must promptly notify students' parents of any substantial change in the student services, including counseling services or monitoring related to the student's mental, emotional, or physical health or well-being or the school's ability to provide a safe and supportive learning environment for the student. Well, that's a pretty all encompassing state, statement. Um, and where I think this is going, is is going to lead to in relation to that is that if we, if a student shares something with us, maybe concerning their sexual orientation, maybe considering transgender issues, maybe considering their sexual um activities, maybe considering their drug activities, maybe sitting there drinking. Um, it's becoming pretty clear based on this that we would have an obligation to tell the parents. And if you read that, that, that statement that I just read, I, it's hard to say that any of the things involving a kid in school, a student in school doesn't impact that in some way. So I think this is where, where we're going to start beginning to have a lot of issues with.
What's in that bill? We said it's in the middle of the bill?
It's um, it follows in section B, as in Bravo. Uh, two. So it's like right on the middle of the first page.
Oh, first page.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't say first page, you're right. If you go on to read it more, the longer you read it, you realize there's a lot of really strong language about their ability to know. In fact, um, later on in the statute, there's actually a process that permits a parent to file a complaint with the school principal or assistant principal if they believe they haven't been notified, and if they're not happy with the decision they get as to why they weren't notified, they can actually file an appeal to the superintendent's office. So it provides a significant amount of procedural rights for parents as it relates to that. Um, I, I'll just kind of, if those of you know me, I just kind of go right at it. Like, this is a little bit different than when we dealt with the issue regarding pronouns and what kids would be called in school and so forth. We spent a lot of time talking about that, uh, two years ago, right? Um, and I think one of the, I think if I remember where you all landed was if a student wanted to be called a different pronoun or a different name than their biological name or what we had on the birth certificate, that it was require the parents to consent to doing that. But I think at the time you agreed that you were not, if, if you went to the student, you said, well, we'd have to have your parents' consent. Student said, well, I don't want my parents to know that. We kind of left it at that place.
Yeah.
Right? I don't know if you could do that anymore. Probably would have to tell the parents. And that's, that's a big change. And that will be a change, I think, that some people will you will, there will be people who will have a lot of heartache with that decision.
Well, I, I don't want to dive deep into this.
Yeah.
Discussion, but it was, I guess the, the question in that case, like you just mentioned. It was not that the, the teacher was not, or the parent was supposed, not supposed to be notified. The question was whether you would do it if the kid didn't.
Right, exactly. I, I mean, I misspoke.
Yeah.
Not, not precisely.
You know, whether it was true or not, there was chatter about you know, certain students or certain teachers or whatever, still choosing to do certain things, whatever. What happens given the law enacted though? And me, and I think maybe we're talking about something a bit more serious because you're talking about counseling or whatever else, but where do you draw the line between some substantial, you know, what's a substantial change? And if it's a student confiding in a teacher and the principal doesn't know about it and the parent complains about it, like, I, I am as curious what the interpretation, something like that.
Well, I think it so I think it depends on who you are, John, right? Because if you're a teacher, you're looking at this and you're saying, what does substantial change mean? And what does mental, emotional, or physical health or well-being mean? And I don't know if I want to take the chance that my interpretation of that is the correct interpretation. So I think I might have an obligation to tell the parent because I don't want to be found a violation of this and have my license be in jeopardy or have a complaint against my license. Um, I don't know what substantial change, I could make an argument on both sides. Yeah, like I think I can make an argument that if a student came to me and was always being referred to as this name and this gender and this pronoun and is now asked me to do something different, would I consider that to be something that would be a substantial change?
Just depends on who's interpreting that.
I agree.
Yeah.
But.
But so, so are we going to then be required in our policies to set the level?
I think those are some things you as a board have to discuss.
There's going to be recommendations that we're going to have to go through and have that conversation. Um, the difference is, like, right now in practice in the guidance we put out to the parents, um, when we did this two years ago, and then what we do every single school year now at the start of the year, parents have the right to go into Power School at any given point in time and tell us what the student's nickname is or what the preferred pronoun is for that child. So that's still in play. That's not changing. That's not, that's still going to be here on our school campus. Where we think the impact is, and this is where we've been having conversations with Bill's, where you're going. Well, if John approaches Michael as the classroom teacher and John tells me, I now want to be X. Now, based upon the change for the parent rights of Bill, or Bill of Rights, it becomes effective in July for an interpretation that we've received is that we have an obligation absent the definition of substantial, because it's not defined, that we should tell the parent. That's a change in practice within the school district.
And what if a teacher overhears that a student is being called by a different name, but the student doesn't confide that in the teacher?
Clear response, Debbie.
I know. And, and do we want that on our teachers?
No, you can take that a step further. What if, what if the teacher overhears one student?
Right. Right.
But you, its teacher may know that there's no prenatal care, and you may know from what you've heard that the parents of that student don't have knowledge of the pregnancy.
It's balancing right now back to the same thing with Senate Bill one oh four. You're putting the administrator or teacher in a vicarious situation to violate the law that's now required. And then the question becomes, what's the interpretation of substantial because it's not defined? So if you err on the side of caution, then erring on the side of caution is you report with limited exceptions. And there are some limited exceptions when it goes back to abuse, neglect, or other things specifically. If you believe that that would exist, then you don't report.
And then we gave teachers two years ago was, you know, we've worked with the counselor, worked with your administrators, don't take this on yourself if you're not confident and where, which way to go with something, if you have any question on, you need the support, like with anything else. You know, involve your principal, your building administrators, that discussion and how to proceed.
When does this go into effect?
And if you actually go further, because I don't know how far in the weed you want to go, but if you go to page four, where it says a student's emotional or physical health, it specifically says their gender identification.
Well, there you go, there's the answer.
But that's not sub, that, that, is that still a substantial change? I don't know.
Well.
I think the intent of the statute is that you tell, yeah, I mean, it's a parental notification right statute, right? So.
But to Debbie's question, um, Senate Bill one oh four will be on the February twenty fourth board agenda. House of eight, the Parent Bill of Rights, although it's in the packet, isn't something that isn't nine one one the same way. It has to be in place by July for
The actual wording is, um, students' mental, emotional, and physical health or well-being includes at a minimum any of the following. And item D is in Delta on that list, says any request by student identifies the gender does not align with the student's biological sex.
The other piece I'm just gonna say, just for transparency purposes, and I don't know there's any implication, so please don't interpret that. I know this, but they don't. I haven't done any of the work yet. Um, but two years ago, you also changed other policies where you put in specific language to empower the parents. So now those policies, if they're on any of these policies, will get looked at to make sure that they are compliant with the new requirements of the statute. I don't know that there's a conflict, but that's something else that's on our radar that we at least have to check because you did personalize and make decisions at the local level that could now be different than what's required. Or more stringent than what's required, and then you would still choose to make the same choice at my point.
It feels like we're making the teacher's job really different all of a sudden. You know, like.
I don't think so.
But they have to.
We're not making their job any, we're not making their job different. We're just, I, I, I think frankly, it's protecting them in a lot of ways. And, and
But they have become the police of
No, they're, they're not.
There's something going on here that I need to tell a parent.
Uh, and if I was a parent, that's what I would want. I mean, let's just make it clear. Let's not, let's not play, let's not dance in this gray area anymore. The parent's parent, talk to the parent.
I mean, we can discuss this as a policy issue, but I, I almost think like maybe there's an outlet for the teacher, like, hey, this is what I was made aware of. Um, maybe it's the principal that makes the call on, is that something to notify a parent about, and the principal notifies? I don't know.
I understand your point, but we also have to be careful because there's duties to report at the same time by statute for other things. So all those would have to be taken into consideration. Um, this is a July first one. It's not a February twenty fourth one. But we're telling you because this is going to become a very vocal, public topic um, when these move through the processes um throughout the spring.
And I also don't know how much impact that this would have on you too, but there is some, uh, the previous statute that required us to give release time for religious activities for students. But now we also have this obligation to collaborate with the actual third parties who are doing it, so we have to actually cooperate.
We do.
I know, not everybody does in other places, so I don't think. It's like, gotta like, it says collaborate, but.
That's April ninth.
Like collaborate as in like, we don't, you don't know that.
I think you probably need to probably, I think the way it would be looked at is you need to try to remove barriers that would make it more difficult for students to access release time.
So I would use the example that in our world, I would define the collaboration of working with the entity that's doing this within our school district to talk about over time, they've come to the conclusion that it's best to remove the students for release time during the lunch periods. So they're not missing core time, which we never wanted, but now they're also not missing specials, the other elective courses that students are taking. So now the students are participating voluntarily during their lunch.
They're being fed.
It's on them, the entity, to do that, not us. We're not permitted to do that. But yes, they are, but it's through the third party.
Any questions on, I know that's a lot, both of us, we're all have to take in, and, and I, I apologize for the long analysis of the law, but I think it's important if you understand how we got here.
You want to touch upon law enforcement?
Yeah, real quick, um, so the law enforcement agencies on campuses, there was kind of a big buzz about it last week um, related to ICE agents because there was actually a memorandum that had been in, in play for a long time with um, the ICE officials that said they could not go to places of worship schools to uh, to effect arrest or for any custody issues, and that was removed. So now they can go to place, schools, and they can't go to places of worship if they are um pursuing a warrant or pursuing investigations regarding illegal um individuals in our country. And so there was a lot of scuttlebutt at first. It was like, oh my God, are they allowed to just walk to school and take kids and so forth and so on? The answer is no, we already have some very significant protections as it relates to that. So number one, they can't access any personally identifiable information, which is protected under FERPA and under our state laws, which are actually stronger than FERPA. They are not allowed to access that unless they would have a subpoena to be able to access those documents. Okay, so they can't, so all they can get is directory information, just like anybody else can get. Um, and then if they want to talk to a student and we have custody of that student, because that student is actually in our custody while they're at school, um, we will handle that like we handle any other situation right now when law enforcement arrives. And that is if they want to talk to the student regarding something regarding the student's own safety as it relates to their parents, like if there's an abuse or neglect situation. Uh, we don't contact the parents, but we do make sure that there's an administrator present for that interrogation or that questioning. If it's, we also potentially sometimes will let them have access to students, and maybe we've called the police because it's a crime that took place at school. Right? Uh, we might allow them to have access without calling parents, and that is sort of a continuum of where that might be, but that sometimes does happen. Again, if that happens, we have an administrator present at interrogation takes place. If they're showing up to investigate something that's not having to do with school, and it's not an imminent safety or threat issue for the student, we do not allow them to have access to that student unless, one, the parent consents. Two, the parent, um, the parent comes and is present. Or three, if neither one of those two things happen, we say to the police officers or the law enforcement, you would have to take custody of the student for you to do this, otherwise you're not accessing it while he or she's here at school. You would have to take custody of the student for you to do this, otherwise you're not accessing it while he or she is here at school. We already have those policies in place that are, they're, they're strongly reinforced with the law, doesn't require us to do anything. Um, but you know, a lot of people are running around like the sky is falling when that, when that memorandum was rescinded and it really hasn't changed. Anything as it relates to schools. You know, our biggest thing at that point was to get information out to. Sort of our, our, our places, you know, the first people that see people that come into our buildings, like the receptionists and administrative assistants, those kind of people for them to know. Just because you have an ICE badge, it looks different than the local sheriff's badge, it doesn't matter, that, that process, that protocol is the same.
So when, when something, i- if, if a law enforcement official works along campus. Is there, is it typically their first interactions with one of our SROs? No. Just with the building.
Building office, the secretary, um, the administrative assistant, and then typically a member of the administration.
So SROs aren't called the.
Not until we know, I mean, it's not, it's, I'm not gonna say it doesn't happen, there could be another jurisdiction that would, uh, state Columbus. So Columbus at times could do a courtesy call to NAPD, which then would alert the SRO. That they might be coming, but it doesn't always happen that way.
About this week, I think laid out specifically.
We have very specific requirements of what we're supposed to do.
It's just, Paul, I think when, when that hit the media, it's like everybody lost their minds, like, oh my God, they got some special power that. They don't, they're just like any other law enforcement agency, their badge might be a little more fancy than the average police officer, but they're just like anybody else.
Does our policy, uh, permit? The, the district to shift custody of the child? So we say to the law enforcement.
If they arrest the student, then their police powers then take over custody of the student.
Okay.
Once they arrest the student, whether they have a warrant or whether effectively they, they, they stop and frisk arrest. Um, they, they, once they make that arrest, they have custody of that, that human student, whether it's a student, whether it's a child or an adult.
Okay.
Aside from that, there could be authority provided by the parent or guardian to the school district to release the child to an emergency contact. That we do receive authorization for, absence that, children's services would be involved because we're not permitted to release the child. Because we're acting a local parent.
Right. Okay.
That's pretty much enough, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Michael, you ready to move on to CIP? Okay, so our.
Michael, do you want me to stay for this? I don't mind, I just don't want you to get a whole bunch, I don't want to. If you need to, you can always call me.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill.
Not that I don't love all you, I do, but no reason for me to sit here and bill you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate you making that trip up. All right, so we felt like when Michael and Becky and I talked about this, we felt like the best way to walk through kind of. Any additional thoughts on, on goals is to just use the CIP framework? So Michael's gonna. Go through, give us a little bit of an update where we are on some of the goals and then if we wanna add to. Thank you. If we wanna add to any of this or have discussion, um, we can, we can do that as we go through the CIP.
Let me start just with high level, um. Mark, I think you can see the screen now, right?
Yes.
Um, so this, you have a continuous improvement plan in your folder as the one pager, but I took the section to basically throw it down. So just to remind you, the commitment to excellence and the focus that are part of the work. Um, to understand how we're achieving the purpose within the school district and our aspiration. Um, to become the best rated public school district in Ohio, and then specifically the work of the faculty staff, we call employees to be accountable. Um, for implementing the research-based practices, including the rigorous, um, aligned curriculum. Um, the common assessment focused instruction data driven decision to achieve again the purpose, the best academic development outcomes for each student within the school district. Within a physically sustainable budget. So that's the overarching piece, just to remind you of what we do to talk about the CIP. And before I get into specific benchmarks, um, we pulled mid-year information, because I think it's important to frame and remind us who. Um, we're in service to within the school district and specifically what we're doing. So, um, January enrollment, this is just a summary that shows you by building, but also total enrollment at the top. So this was pulled as of January, first week back, um, in January for five thousand and eighteen, based upon the mid-year, um. Withdrawals from the school district, but the mid-year enrollments aren't on this chart. So this was done before mid-year enrollment when we came back for a second semester, but it just shows you what the population looks like across the school district. Um, people ask us all the time, what's the largest class in the school district? So you can see the current senior class at four thirty-five at the top. Um, typically it's plus or minus four hundred kids per class. There's a couple lowers, like the eighth grade sitting at three forty-seven, that will change when they go to the high school, because there will be middle school students that come back for high school. That might currently be in a community school, private profile school, that have come back for public education at the high school level. So we always see an influx typically in ninth grade, but that's one of the smaller classes typically on, on campus right now. First grade, um, ironically also is one of the smaller classes currently on campus, um, at three fifteen. So I tell people we're somewhere between three hundred and fifty to four hundred kids on average per grade level. Um, and eventually over the course of the next ten years, based on the enrollment projections and everything we did with, um, corporate strategies and future things. We should be sitting in the five hundred range per class, that's the enrollment growth that we should experience over the next decade. Um, student special population data, I just think this is important for people to try to see and understand. So when you look up at the makeup or composition of the needs of our students across the school district. And these are broken down differently in additional slides, and I'm using the summary. So students are in a five oh four plan for accommodations that may not qualify for special education services, but could be extended time, could be an anxiety issue. Something specifically happening in the mental health tract. Um, there is eight percent of our student population that represents that, our ELL population, English language learners. Right, five percent, our immigrant population currently on campus is three percent. Speaks a language other than English at home is seven percent, so it's three hundred and thirty-five kids, um, across our school campus. Economically disadvantaged, the definition is I qualify for free or reduced lunch. So that is the definition of become economically disadvantaged, you go through the application process for certification at the federal level or at the state level. To qualify for free and reduced lunch. Now, we have fifteen percent of our student population that does receive free or reduced lunch every single day at school. You would never know who those students are, they receive the same meals as everyone else on our school campus that have access to. We don't do any special lunches for any student that qualifies for free and reduced lunch. They have the same lunch opportunities as every other kid on campus. Um, receive special education services, so a wide variety of different types of services that qualify through an individualized education plan is now fifteen percent of our student population. That number and our English language learner population is growing. Or gifted population, um, for the continuum, obviously at the other end of the continuum. Receiving gifted services identified as gifted within the school district is thirty-three percent of our population. And then the last one, um, for vulnerable youth, um, for qualifications, and this is a category at the state and federal level. It represents in the state, for Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, these are our kids. When they're put together as a vulnerable youth category, it's a student with disability, English language learner. Foster placement, migrant child, child of a military family. Um, homeless, residential treatment facility, or justice involved. So all of those eight different categories are tracked at the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. To represent vulnerable youth in our school district. So we have one thousand seven hundred and ninety-five kids, or thirty-six percent of our student population, that meet one of those eight criterias to be identified as vulnerable.
There are particular categories that makes up the, well, it's a big number.
Um, I have to give you that, I don't have that with me tonight, but I can get it for you. It is a big number. Um, next, because I just think this is, we watched this just because it's interesting to me. Um, where are students living, um, within our community, so people ask this when we talk about the different. Height that makes up our school district, the geographic boundaries of twenty-one geographic square miles. So forty-seven, two point two percent of our students, two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven are in New Albany City. Um, Plain Township is three hundred and forty-three students, Columbus City is two thousand two hundred and seventy-four students. And then we have thirty-three kids that are a little slice called other. I will tell you that the majority of the thirty-three kids, um, qualify for enrollment within the school district based upon previous provisions in the negotiated agreement. For employees prior to two thousand and eight that were able to enroll their kid into the school district. So that's who represents the majority of other, there's a few exceptions, um, in there, but generally speaking, that's the other category. Um, makes up the out-of-district placement, but it gives you an idea of our current makeup within our school district, that's the current composition of where they live.
Just, just for, if anyone's watching this, just for clarification purposes, the green that shows Columbus City. That's Columbus City boundaries, it does not mean that that entire area is.
Yeah, it's not green on the map, so I'm sorry for that, but it's just the way the colors came out, that whole area is not us. Yeah, so we have our geographic boundary and we can make it a darker color so it shows up. Um, but that's for illustration purposes, but you're right, that whole green section is not us. Um, next, because I think this is a fun map, um, I challenge with Greg to come up with a different way to illustrate our student population, just because it helps us look at. Across the world where they come from. Um, our current student, from our student population, we have over sixty countries represented, um, that have come to New Albany from at least forty-six states. And Washington DC. Um, so it's just interesting when you look at the composition across the world. Um, these are all the places our kids have touched at some point in their life, prior to becoming a student in our school district. So we have a very diverse student population that I don't think is always widely understood. Um, but it's actually a celebration of the diversity that's represented from all the different countries and ethnicities and races that are part of our student makeup.
Mark, are you still there?
I'm sorry, he texted me that he was muting, so he could, um. Got to triple A.
I'm back, I'm back, guys, thanks.
Did you mean to call me?
No, no, yeah, I didn't, I, that was better.
Okay, okay, just making sure.
Um, next, languages, just to give you context again, um, we have many languages that are spoken within our school district at home. The two, um, number one and number two are Spanish and Japanese. The Spanish is the number one, um, non-English speaking language at home, Japanese is number two. Um, those are the top two currently within the school district. And then again, from birth countries outside of the United States, um, for students currently enrolled. Um, and it just shows you all the different countries that students in our school district come from, again, to celebrate the diversity of really the world that's present on our school campus every single day. Um, next, student, um, ethnicity, race data, this again is from January, so we pulled this just to understand it and put it into, you can see the breakdown by building. Um, but sixty-three point six percent of our student population is white, twelve point one percent is black, ten point nine percent is Asian. Seven point eight percent of our student population is multiracial. Um, five point three percent of our student population is Hispanic and point two percent is American Indian. Um, based upon self-reporting from our families upon enrollment within the school district, so that's where we get this information from. Um, students and families reported upon enrollment.
It's so cool to see the diversity, I mean, it's, we have a very rich student population.
Um, gender, I get asked this question ironically, sometimes you have more boys than girls, it varies by grade level. So I just gave you the breakdown, because it's the data that I get to see, um, just because sometimes people find it interesting, just to understand what's happening. We're fairly evenly split, um, when you go back to looking across the school districts, we're forty-nine point two percent female on campus today. And we're fifty point eight percent, um, so currently there are more boys on campus than girls, but that can shift in any given year. Um, economic disadvantaged, again, I just remind you the definition to qualify, um, to be categorized. And it's a required reporting period for Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, is you qualify for free and reduced lunch. So again, there's currently fifteen point four percent of our student population, seven hundred and seventy-five students on our campus. That do meet the requirements to receive free or reduced lunch, and then you can just see breakdowns across the school campus itself. But again, you would never know who these students are, we do not let that information ever be public, because every student is treated exactly. Gifted, um, people ask about identification, what does it look like across grade level band, um, and what specifically happened? So that process actually begins at the primary school, um, for identification purposes, and that continues all the way through the high school. Um, based upon different forms of giftedness that can be identified, this just shows you the breakdown across the school district to show that one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine. Of our students, um, are currently identified as gifted, um, on our school campus every day. Special education services, again, summary purposes, fourteen point seven percent, I'm just gonna call it fifteen percent of our student population. Um, are identified with individualized education plans and they require services, so it just shows you again the diversity of meeting academic needs. Which will contribute to my conversations about the benchmarks. When you look at all the different academic needs that are here on the school campus that we have to serve to meet specifically their needs. Um, five oh fours, again, information point, additional services that are provided and identified through a formalized process for students. Could be medically related, could be mental health related, could be extended time. Um, it just may not qualify as individualized education plan, but there could still be a plan that's formalized and it's called a five oh four plan. ELL, um, English language learners is a population that's actually growing on our school campus. Uh, when we looked at enrollment, um, specifically for what's happening, and you understand, um, but. The piece is, I'm gonna get into it a little bit deeper in just a second, um, this is a growing population on our school campus for English language learners. Um, and I think there's a couple things that'll surprise you when I try, so first, I'm just gonna mention special education. Um, I'll go back to the start of the new school year, so when we started the school year this year, we had one hundred new students that came to New Albany Plain Local Schools. That were identified as students that needed special education services. Um, at mid-year, so at the beginning of the year, it was one in ten kids that came to our school district to enroll. Also had services that were required through an individualized education plan. At mid-year in January, when we did the mid-year enrollment, one of five students that walked through the door had an IEP. So we're now over fifteen percent or approaching fifteen percent students in our school population. I don't wanna advertise this, but honestly, I believe because of the services we provide specifically to meet the needs of students that are on IEP. We're like a magnet school district, so people are seeking out in Albany Plain Local Schools, we hear this often in the IEP meetings for new families. I talked to so-and-so and they said the services are here, and this is what my student would benefit for, and I want my kids to have access, and they figured out a way to come into the school district. And meet the geographic residency boundaries, um, to be eligible to enroll in the school district itself. ELL is very similar, there's three different categories, um, English language learners, new, um, English language enrollee, and emerging language, um, per people. So there's an upward trajectory when you look at the total enrollment, so when you look at going back to two thousand and twenty-one to where we are today in two thousand and twenty-five. We've gone from a hundred eighty-three students to two hundred and forty-seven students that are identified as requirements to meet English language learners. So they go through the OALPA test process to receive services, and they have to actually come to a point in proficiency. Where they no longer qualify for services at some point during their educational career, and that varies individually by each specific student. The new EL enrollees, when you look at what's happening specifically at the start of the school year. I would tell you it was one in five kids that walked through the registration desk had an ELL identification. Or were suspected to need ELL services that went through the formalized process. In January, it's one out of three. So much like the numbers have changed for students with special education, I would tell you this is the other student population that's shifting. On our school campus to require additional services, and we're evaluating what those services now will have impact for. When you translate that into staffing and how we assign human resources to meet those specific needs across the school campus. Um, really, as of January, when you take the total number of kids that have enrolled in this last month and a half. Over half of the kids that have signed up in the school district that meet the enrollment requirements are either ELL or students with disabilities. Coming to our school district for special education services. So benchmarks, um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about these, because Debbie and I talked about this, to try to give you mid-year update and data. So the first benchmark is specifically looking at student achievement, um, to earn the district performance index greater than ninety-five percent. We won't know what that is until next fall. Um, benchmark two is about the growth piece, to look at the progress component, again, there's no real way to measure that during the school year. We look at growth in relationship to our MAP data and EVAAS data for value-added purposes. But we won't know the end result of that for state reporting until that actually comes out in September. And the same thing with gap closure, we do look at specifically in the gap world, what we're doing on individualized plans that have been created for kids. To try to understand, are they making growth to close gaps within subgroup data? to try to understand, are they making growth to close gaps within subgroup data um based upon the population that's being served? So the one I'm gonna talk about tonight is relative to academic achievement. So this is the projected um data that we have versus the observed. So you remember when we released information in the fall, our permanent improvement, or I'm sorry, not permanent improvement, performance index. Um, thinking about money, um, the perfect in capital projects, um, the performance index is one oh four point four five five. Um, so in twenty-four, twenty-five, um, so for projection purposes, we still see an upward trajectory based upon map data right now and EVOS data that would have been translated into one oh one point seven five two. Current data shows we're at one oh three point one oh four. So we're still showing academic progress towards higher levels, student achievement, gap closure and progress growth based upon the data we currently have. That'll then get translated into something that happens at the state level once we do assessments in March. But in the mid-year data that we have, we are on progress, making forward progress for continued growth that would be expected for academic achievement, which is good news. Um, benchmark two and three, I talked about again, go back to the gap closure and the progress component. Just gonna tie those back into the progress monitoring that's going on specifically within that data to try to understand what's happening across the school campus to meet the academic developmental needs of kids. Benchmark four is graduation, college and career ready. Um, again, we're working on this, fifty percent or more of the class of two thousand and twenty-five will earn the honors diploma and ten percent or more of the class of twenty-five will earn the industry credential or complete pre-apprenticeship as reported in the graduation data collected by ODEW. Dr. Maimias has taken this on as a personal charge. So she's actively working with Mr. Steele at the high school and the other administrators and teachers to look at our career pathway data, what we're specifically doing for apprenticeship, pre-op, um, pre-apprenticeship opportunities for students because of the reporting requirements that eventually will come out this fall. So I'm gonna tell you, this is currently one of my headaches that Mrs. Lofton and Mr. Taylor and I are actively talking about. So um, there was an open comment period with you, how department of education and workforce to talk about the new progress measure that's gonna be on the report card. I will tell you, there's no state or I will tell you, the majority of the state, there's very few school districts on the preliminary information that's come out from the department that now tells us how they're actually going to calculate this, that fared well. Um, so right now they're using an eighty percent as the requirement to basically say that you would earn five stars on this component. We're in the high seventies. Um, it's in arrears. Um, we gave comments because of how they're calculating it specifically. They're not looking at um in high achieving school districts, the balance of what you're doing in AP CCP um for college credit plus, um, your partnership of Eastland Fairfield or Core Tech, the pathway requirements that they want to put in place. Um, and the military readiness piece, because we don't control that. Students make that personal choice with their families um in the calculation period. So this is the final. I'm just gonna tell you that this is an area of concern presently for some of us in the school district because I do not agree with the methodology that's currently being used. We did submit public comment back to the department because there was an opportunity to do that, to give our two cents as educators about what we think about this. Um, but I don't know what that end result's going to be. We haven't seen that yet. This will come out on the report card beginning in September. Um, it has significant implications overall district ratings for any school district in the state of Ohio based upon the current composition of how it's being calculated by ODEW. So I am hopeful it's going to change because I do not agree with the current methodology. Benchmark five, um, to Debbie's point, this is where um five, six and seven, um, for five and six, but in particular five, these are areas that we think there's greater conversation to have about other things that you want to be doing. Um, I'm gonna talk about the ones that we have defined plans for and then we have to then have conversations about what else you want to do to further define the two that we have not done for second semester. Um, so age appropriate, so um surveys, the first is the student belonging survey. We just did the results of the Board of Education meeting. Substance use this survey um is in the queue. We're prepping it. It'll come out for grades seven, nine and eleven. It will go to families first. Parents will have the option to opt out of the substance use survey, just like we always have in the school district. Um, and then the new one that we talked about in the fall that Dr. Maimias is currently working on um is part of the student agency, which is Student Voice. So we are part of that new collaborative that's happening with plus or minus ten school districts to talk about how to incorporate student agency into the school district differently um to represent what it can look like both from a student's perspective as well as a parent's perspective. So as a requirement for our participation in the collab, we have to do a survey in grade six through twelve um to talk about student voice. Um, Dr. Maimias is working on the draft of that, so I will share it when it's ready. Um, that same thing then will be translated into a parent um survey for student agency. So there's a requirement not to just do the survey in grade six through twelve with kids, there's also requirements to do with parents. So we will facilitate that this spring. I don't have the timeline for that. Um, the substance use one is in the queue. We're actually doing that in March. Um, so we just saw the. February, I'm sorry, we changed it. Um, that one's in the queue. We just looked at the final draft. This is often, I just went through it. So I will give you access to that. I haven't done it yet because we just did it. Um, but again, there's a parent letter that will go home. Parents get access to the survey questions and they have the right to the opt-out if they do not want their seventh grade or ninth grade or eleventh grade. Um, but we only do that in um grades seven, nine and eleven. Those are in the queue to happen. At the end of the school year, we will also do the staff climate survey. I didn't mention the staff will also do student agency. That's the same requirement. So agency has a student component, a staff component for teachers and then a parent component. We will still do the staff climate survey in May um at the end of the school year. The second one, um, benchmark five, I'm like, we already talked about for um houses and root cause.
So I presented in December, um, the initial um results of our root cause analysis. We met that deadline of completing work by December first and um landing on that focus area of how we support and connect over time with all of our students new to the district throughout the year. Uh, because we, for the second semester, we're gonna um focus really heavily on that. And I actually spoke to a group of uh our educators today about that and um how they can help support that. Our consultants, you know, our specialist nurses and so on. Um, and then we are today, as of today, right, or tomorrow, today, I think, just finished our last of our house um selections for students. And that, I know, they didn't know if they got them all done in one day because we've been so busy, we only got to stop over during one of the groups. Um, uh, our final student selections were today with our um high school and it was really exciting. It was first thing in the morning. They were a little tired that first group, but first thing in the morning, a lot of energy, a lot of hype and um a lot of enthusiasm for, from our students. That house is coming back to the high school because some of them have siblings that were a part of the former house system that was there. Um, so there's a lot of excitement. Um, but we're, we're really happy that all five of our buildings um are, remember that our pre-K and K are more of a learning um in a learning place rather than an implementing place. Everybody's piloting this year, but our um pre-K and K building is, our ELC is um helping students understand what it is. And so when they get to the first grade and they're selected into a house, um, or when the house selects them.
House selects them.
They will understand what it means and, and understand how points work and all of that. Um, so we're really excited. Still meeting with principals monthly to talk through how things are going, shared updates at our last leadership meeting. So we have, at this point, we have met all of those um sub items of the benchmark.
We are doing house presentation at the board meeting in February based upon the calendaring that we did with Debbie on presentation. So we were waiting for all the house selection processes to happen to get into second semester. But we will do a full-blown house update publicly with you at the board meeting in February and talk about house. And what is it? Why is it all these fun things? So all that's coming in your February board meeting that I teased in the last board. Um, the next two are the ones we need to have conversations about, particularly um the, these two subbullets. I'm gonna run through these um last two slides because I'm gonna stop screen sharing, but for the purposes of the public, um, they need to see the slide and then I'm gonna stop sharing on the screen so that you can come back and talk about these last two bullets here because that's what Debbie and I framed as the bulk of the conversation for this evening is to try to further define these and the work that you would like to see from the Board of Education. So the first is to implement strategies to increase parent community engagement and knowledge of current and future needs of our school district. So the annual community update was new. We did that this year in September. So it was a direct mail to all families in our school district, regardless if you had kids in the school district. But every resident in the city, um, the township and um or our school district boundaries received a direct mailer. So that was our new piece that we came out with in the fall. So we did achieve that. We did create that and we defended um from the School District Board of Education Administration. We have not done any town hall meetings yet this school year. We have not created any additional listening sessions this school year. Um, Mrs. Fuller is the PTO liaison, is really actively involved with the PTO. She can talk about PTO when we get off the screen so everybody can see you talk because you can't see you talk right now. Um, so we'll come back to that. And then community events. Um, all the community events during the first semester, really through summer going into the fall, were all tied issue, bringing the bond issue. So we had many, many different community events. Some of them could have been listening sessions at the same time. We met with certain neighborhoods. But I'm just gonna characterize all those as a community event, but everything has been driven to the date and this current school year that we did through the summer into the fall was for issue four. The second bullet that we need to talk about tonight for additional action by the Board of Education or ideas that you have is to enhance community and business partnerships to increase educational opportunities for students. The examples we use when we wrote the goal were senior seminar, industry-based credentials, community service hours, entrepreneur day and concord counseling. So we'll, we can talk about what we've done in senior sem, industry-based credentials, entrepreneur day and concord counseling, because there was actually a session today or tomorrow um related to that. So those are the two we have to come back to, so keep track of that page. On the last um slide and let Becky talk about the financial goal, there was a benchmark there.
That's to maximize efficiencies, to reduce the current year, five-year fourth class fine item, four point five total expenditures by at least um one percent or this year, seven hundred and ninety-eight plus dollars. And we're well on our way to meeting that goal. The bulk of it are two areas. First, we didn't hire all of the new FTEs that we had projected. But secondly, I think we're gonna see this more and more as um we have teachers that are retiring because as stare has changed the number of years and it's reduced it. Um, it's really more in the turnover. And so as we have more senior um staff leaving and then we're replacing them, not that we're looking for all brand-new teachers, but it's certainly, you're hiring at a lower experience level. And so really, that's the bulk of where we're seeing the reductions and how we're gonna meet that. And that's both on the um salary side and the benefit side. The one thing that could throw it off, which I don't expect that it will, but Michael talked about how we want from about a ten percent special education population to, or moving up to about fifteen percent. When we have special ed students and their IEP um requires us to have certain services, we have to supply those services. It might be a one-on-one aid. It could be, we need another teacher because we have to have smaller class size or something like that. So that's where we're really watching as we go through the year because if they come in, I mean, special ed students, all students come at all point here. But at this point, I think specifically that we will move that forward.
So with your permission, I'm gonna stop screen sharing so that you're all back into view since you can go back to the previous slide because it won't be on the screen to talk about specifically benchmark number five. Um, and enhancing um the implementation strategies for parent community engagement and community business partnerships because that's the one that still needs second semester work beyond our focus on what we did everything in the first semester related to the bond issue. So now we're looking at for next steps to carry through two thousand and twenty-five was the conversation I had with Debbie. If anything else you want to talk about that, why stop it?
Um, I wanna turn it over to Paul because I think a lot of the items that Paul gave me were under this heading, um, especially related to business partnerships. So Paul, do you wanna take it in terms of talking about what you think we should focus on in that regard?
Oh, sure. Now, I think just from a uh business standpoint, we've got an opportunity to partner with our businesses within the business park and others who are small business owners who live residentially in New Albany and work throughout the country and the world. And um, so there may be a vehicle through New Albany for Kids or perhaps a vehicle through directly working with the New Albany Chamber to perhaps, you know, schedule some meetings, community engagement meetings where we could be with members of Business Park, provide some updates on our district, our achieving our goals, our academics, our developmental outcomes. And as Michael noted in his benchmark six, you know, look for opportunities to partner with those businesses. I think many are happy to help and looking for ways to interface with the schools. So I like the ideas of senior seminar, industry-based credentials, community service hours, entrepreneur day, conquer counseling, you know, employment opportunities. You never know what might come from those discussions. So I think there's a, a challenge of not biting off more than we can chew, but I think getting uh into a cadence, uh getting an initial pilot program perhaps with five or six businesses over the, if that's not too aggressive over six months and then you take it from there, uh see how these go and then modify, you know, how we, how we could accommodate these discussions. So that'd be one idea on uh community and business partnerships. I think there's also probably a slight tangent, maybe not directly where you were going Debbie, but uh relative to engaging with our community around um some of the tax policies that impact our revenues. Yeah, stakeholder satisfaction, I could put it under that. We have, we have residents who want to make sure that our um, all of the, the taxpayers are, are paying a fair share. So there may be an opportunity, without getting too specific in today. Maybe we can come back in a future time and talk about how we could again, perhaps work that through uh with some of the volunteers from New Albany for Kids or members of the business community or residents here in New Albany.
Does everyone agree that um that's a priority for this calendar year?
I don't see why it's not something we can, since it's time.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the I guess I'll just go more broadly and I'll, Mark, whenever you're ready to come off of mute, I'll let him talk about this too, but um. I've talked with Mark about this before and I think we've even talked about it in meetings. Um, I, I think anything that we can do to improve or, or increase our exposure to the broader community is a good thing.
Yeah.
And you know, we're, we're a community that, that hasn't been around forever. So we're not, we're not gonna be, I hate to say it, but you know, we're not a Burlington. We are better than them in a lot of ways, but in terms of, in terms of the um established community, the legacy, right? Um, Mark likes to tell me about, you know, growing up in Boston. And so I know we've talked, but you know, if, I would love whether it's, whether it's working with the business community or trying to figure out ways that we can, you know, build up more of an alumni association or build up our, you know, really take, you know, Eaglebackers and turn it into a real athletic booster organization that gets, that gets the community more engaged in what's happening in the, in the buildings, not just when you have a kid here. Um, we'll build some civic pride and get people excited about what's happening here. Um, so I like the idea of engaging the business community for the purposes of helping enhance our kids' education. Um, I'd also like to see ways that, that we can better engage the community at large. Um, and it's, you know, uh, it, it goes both ways. We can invite people all day long. They don't, if they don't show up, it's hard to get them engaged, but if, the more we can get people uh in, inside the walls and experience what, you know, our kids are doing on a daily basis. I mean, you know, we talked way at the beginning of this about, you know, not overstepping our role and being in the buildings. But I will tell you, when you're in the buildings, it's pretty amazing. And you, you get to see it because you're coming in volunteering, but the, the things are happening every day uh with these kids and the things that they accomplish. And, you know, I know we talked about whether it's athletics or whether it's things that are happening at McCoy and when people see, you know, how great some of those, you know, plays, concerts, things are, and they see the talent of these kids. Um, it, it, it feels good. And so I'm. It, it, it feels good. And so I'm, I'm going way beyond what, what Paul was talking about. But that's, that to me would be something I'd, I'd love to see more of. And whether that's, the board has, the board does it or whether we have outside groups that, that take on that role of trying to engage the community more. I just think that there's, I would, you know, I would love to see us begin to build that legacy.
So the other couple of things listed here, I think are focused on that, helping to build up New Albany for Kids. Alex is really excited to work with Jen and me and the board to build a board organization around him and that, that organization and then create opportunities to engage the community as well as communicate with the community. So that's New Albany for Kids and that's going to be a long-term project to build that up. Alex seems totally in, in terms of making that commitment to build that organization. He just needs to stay in close touch with all of us to get support and, and some guidance. And then the other thing that we were working on is something that Mark and I are taking the lead on, which is our thought was maybe a quarterly community newsletter. And we're meeting with Casey and Andrea this week to talk about, can we leverage their distribution list, even if it's just once a quarter and try to build up a network, maybe, you know, tied to New Albany for Kids even, like an opt-in where they can give us their email so we can start building our own database of, of families that are outside of the district that we don't have readily available to communicate with. But to your point, talking about, you know, maybe the newsletter includes, here's all the concerts, plays, sporting events, things that you can engage with in the next three months. And then we, we send it out again. But just, you know, some outreach. And I think it, it partners well with the business outreach as well. So there's a, a business outreach, a community outreach, New Albany for Kids outreach, but these are all programs we need to build.
Yeah. The only thing I would say on the city thing is just, you have to remember that only half of our students are inside the city boundaries. So if the, if, if it's got, we gotta figure out another way to get that out.
We also have other school districts within our city boundaries.
Right. You're right. The, the one thing, and I'm, I'm probably, you know, touching the hot iron here. But, you know, one thing that we may want to think about or have some discussion around is are there ways that, you know, and it's, I think you mentioned specifically, are there ways particularly around educational requirements like senior seminars? That, that might be a kind of a low entry point to, to, to get some of these local businesses engaged in, you know, our kids doing some sort of project. I, I know that senior seminar allows for a wide breadth of student experience. And I, that's not my role to say what it is, but if, if, if it's one of those things where if a business organization is like, well, you know, how, how do you want us to get involved? Something like senior seminar seems like a, an easy way to say, you know, it's a, it's a summer or it's one semester and they have to do, you know, there's, it's kind of a set requirement and maybe they could easily build a, a program around that instead of doing something from scratch. But that's, now that's only really looking at seniors.
Right. But I would tell you apprenticeship is probably another opportunity depending on how we define it. And it's not necessarily a paid apprenticeship, paid internship, but are there other opportunities that you could do? And it may have, may be for senior sem, it may not be for senior sem. It could be an underclassman that's looking for something. So like, it just comes down to helping them understand what their opportunities could be. If we would give them examples or ideas, is this something your company could do? And I think it's just coming up with the menu of choices that they might be able to find something on the menu that they could plug into.
Yeah. And we do have a wonderful partnership. The Chamber has helped us in the past reach out to try to find mentors, onsite advisors for students who are lacking that connection. And I know the high schools made a large effort to make more connections for kids who don't already have that within their own family units. A lot of our kids have amazing connections through their neighborhoods and their families and the businesses their parents and guardians are in. But many of them don't. And so the high schools made that a big difference as well.
The other place I would go on Paul said it is employment from the standpoint that we do have students in the school district that don't do school the normal way you do school. So they might just be a noble academy. So they're leaving for half-day to go to a work placement. So we're looking for places that would employ a student as part of their school day to help the student be able to successfully meet all the requirements necessary to graduate. Because not every kid does school the same way. So that alternate placement, I'm just going to call it that, is something else that would be beneficial because as hard as it is, it's not hard. You can go find a job, but not every kid wants to go work in a restaurant environment. So we need other types of environments that could be safe and attractive for kids to go to that would be flexible. Because that's part of it. You're still in school part-time during the day. You have to be willing to adjust those hours to meet the needs that would be required for that student.
Do you have like a database of people in the community who are willing to talk to students about different jobs, whether that be in high school or even like a sixth grader, I want to know what an accountant does. I want to know what a, like, you know, those kind of like partnerships built up already.
Yeah. Two years ago, we started advertising that for the people that wanted to really support students in senior seminar. One of the things that we see is when students are going to select senior seminar projects, it's really who they know, who their family knows, who, who their neighbors are, is their direct connection. And so we're trying to increase access for all students. We did a push for six solid months with limited success. We were able to get students connected with some interest. So we did that two ways. So one was we had students advertise what they were looking for. So I'm looking to be in orthodontists and then we would push that out. We also had it the other way. So I'm a member of the community. I work in this business. I'm willing to host one to students in this topic and we would advertise it in reverse within the school. And so we have done it that both ways, limited success. I think as Mr. Sawyer said, really what Mr. Steele has done at the high school really over the last eighteen months has pushed that even more and more to increase access. And so that's kind of where we're at right now at the high school.
Ken, is it primarily geared towards senior seminar or seniors? Both, I mean, even like the I've got an interest in a particular program. That's at the, that's the senior level regularly?
There has been, yes, primarily at the senior level because that's a requirement. But we've also seen an increase in the need in noble academy for students that are trying to meet the industry-recognized credential set by the state as an alternative to graduation or for that, that seal. So we also have that. It's a smaller population that we have, but the same need is there for those students.
Is there anybody like from the chamber that's like directly like a liaison to the schools that you interface with?
Yeah, they've hosted students. We're at the chamber.
I was thinking, I've been hearing about just from these conversations last couple of weeks with you all, different things we're doing. It really would be great to sort of inventory the menu of ways that, that companies are helping, businesses are helping. And then you just broaden that appeal across the community.
I'll use the example, and I said this, I think Paul and I talked about it in some conversation or it was Debbie. It's one of the two. You don't know which one now because I don't know if it was Chamber related or you. But the city, goes back to Paul's point about, is it quarterly? Is it semi-annual? What is this? The city tried and they've started it. So it's, we've only had one that I'm aware of, but the city was trying to convene a group meeting in the business park, hosted in the business park to basically do like a semi-annual update. And the city sent out the invitation, then they brought people in to basically give updates. It's almost like what we do with Chamber, but in a different way because not everyone gets to do that. So we had talked about, okay, how do we get in fall that we get to do that? Because it's a city thing. But to Paul's point or Debbie's point, with whomever I talked about it, well, maybe it doesn't have to be a city thing. It's just a school thing. So it's a school show. So it's not about, okay, you gotta listen to the township. You gotta listen to the city. You gotta listen to the mayor. You gotta do this. It's just school. And if you're busy, and it may not be the same person that comes to that meeting, but if they would send a representative from their business, they could get educated about the school district to Paul's point. And here's, you know, just fast facts about academics, education, opportunities.
Do for
It is. It's a consolidated version of that, but it's only school-centric. And then maybe then it becomes more of an engagement opportunity to really take more questions and engage in a conversation about, well, like, well, what do you want to know about the school district? What would be useful, you know, or how could we help you? And would you be willing to partner with us differently? For Paul's point, I think it's a good idea. It just comes up to the structure and maybe it's, it doesn't have to be perfect. We just got to figure out how to get them to come. So if someone would host in the business park, I'm sure we can pick one that would be willing to start it. We have the list from the city that Becky and I requested it of all the current business is in the business park and a contact person for that. So we already requested that in anticipation. We might be doing something with the business park.
Given the other, I guess, talking about priority, given the other projects are going on, do we have bandwidth to put, to begin working on?
Yeah, I would just say it would go back to, and I'm just, I'm looking at Paul, whether he likes this or not, but he's the business Chamber liaison. So he would be the person we would work with to try to put together a show with staff to basically make it happen. I don't think it has to be overly complicated. We just got to start someplace. So we throw it together, schedule two meetings and see who comes. I think we should try. I think we should get one in before the end of the school year.
I think that's doable.
And then try to target another one for the start of the school year.
Two, two before the end of the school year.
We could try. I mean, I'm okay with that. We could have done. I'm okay with it. I can, we can have staff do it. I just need to get in the calendar around construction.
And Paul, you engage us in terms of partnerships in this as board members, like you, you can, you know, pull us in and we're all here to support.
Sounds great.
Jen, is there anything on PTOs that we need to do?
I had told Paul that. Come back. My car is still not towed. It might, actually, the Sistine Chapel might be completed sooner than my targeting. When Paul and I had talked about this a couple of years ago, the notion of trying to create mentor relationships in the community. And, you know, it's something that I take seriously as a parent and because, you know, I, I've had a lot of experience around my kids' friends. And, you know, when they've asked me from time to time to help them. So it's something that I have a real passion for. So, you know, in addition to whatever my other responsibilities, that's something I'd like to work on. In, in an ideal world, as I see it, you know, we, we want the business community in some ways calling us, like helping New Albany does when they need volunteers, right? They call us because they know our kids will respond. They know our kids will show up. They know our kids will do a great job and, you know, distinguish themselves. So, you know, that's like, I describe that as kind of a pull, right? It would be great for us to build towards a situation where we have the companies, you know, sort of pulling our kids in as, as opposed to us trying to place them. And that'll take time. You know, starting with kids in their earlier grades, whether that's middle school or the beginning of high school and getting them and others exposure to those businesses before we're asking the business to make a bigger commitment. Hopefully, if a business had experience with one or more kids over the course of three years in their high school years, that fourth year, when we're asking for them to sort of increase their level of engagement, that they're more willing to do it because they know who the kid or kids are. So I think that that's, you know, part of our, our laying the groundwork here is to work, the ideal state is, you know, we have more people calling us to engage with our kids because they've already had some engagement than we can even really call on our own.
Yes, agree. And Paul, I'd be happy to partner with you on this as well. I think, you know, maybe ideally there'd be at least two board members in each of these meetings with Michael, with Becky, you know, so we had a strong representation. And we just gave a presentation to standard and course that had a lot of really good information in it. So it may, like a lot of the
Might actually be ready.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're ready to go.
So I was trying to keep track of names to where Debbie went. So New Albany for Kids goes back to liaison that we're signed. It's going to be Debbie and Jen, correct? Community newsletters, Debbie and Mark, that's what I heard. Community business partnerships is Paul and Mark taking that, or am I writing John's name? I don't hear your name. Sign the task.
We all look at you, John.
So Paul and John and Debbie and Mark will be along for the ride with Jen. Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah.
You guys can all plug in. I'm just trying to keep track of who I need to follow up with.
No, but even thinking about what, what we've, you know, presented already in different meetings. I feel like we've got the deck ready to go somewhat.
But we need to add the academic stuff. So senior sem and all that stuff, but we can do that.
But even from like, you know, the levy presentations, we have a lot by now. Okay, Paul, anything else you want to add? So I want to be respectful of everybody's time.
I got plenty of time.
We have plenty of time, Mark.
I don't know if that's still true.
Oh, I'm sitting at my desk.
Jen and John and Mark, is there anything else you want to add that we didn't cover?
We met last fall. We're setting up another meeting with the joint boards to give an update for the second semester. There was a great turnout in the fall. So I think it's still in a evolving process of, you know, the PTO is figuring out what their goals and how they're working together.
About the merger that's being discussed? Because I don't know that everybody knows about that.
Yeah, it's in discussion with the boards themselves. I don't know how widely it's been, you know, discussed outside of the PTO boards and membership. But I think in an attempt and discussion about, you've been historically only about the PTO. Part of it is the confusion that you have to join local PTOs or each separate final ones and field organizations with the thought of, you know, onboarding another school and potentially another PTO, keeping everything out at two grade levels and creating another board. There's kind of opportunity to discussion of, is that what they want to do or do they want to merge through a single entity with more of a committee structure in each building? So it's really for them to kind of determine what, what they want to do since they're separate organizations that are, you know, so I'm involved in just refereed discussion, supporting them through that, what they, what they're deciding. But it's been a really thoughtful discussion of how to best do that and how to think forward so that they don't end up with a school and no PTO in the building.
Go ahead, Mark.
Jen, I'm curious, what were some of the, it's because it's very intriguing, some of the benefits that they identified from the merger?
So their pros are mostly on the administrative side. You know, each PTO has a treasurer. They have insurance separately. So they each have a separate policy. So there's paperwork, like regulatory, you know, keeping up with all of that on a schedule with turnover with the board because of how parents need to uh keeping up with all of that on a schedule with turnover with the board because of how parents meet through the schools. Um, so it's a lot of upkeep from um the more like business perspective. Um, so I feel like from that perspective, there's only positives that other session is in terms of distribution of finances, um hospitality, how things are are done, the amount of control on decisions of what events and things like that at each special school bumble versus a larger organization, a cumbersome nature of that um versus convenience for families joining one organization and removing some of the confusion and barriers. So there's definitely pros and cons. It's a big process to dissolve five oh one two threes and reform them um and doing all of that in a legal manner. So it's a, it's an involved process.
I was just gonna say, I'm not a, I'm not an expert at PTOs, but just thinking about may- maybe, maybe this already happens because people work their way through the PTOs, but thinking about kind of that legacy and trying to keep people who are involved for the long term. Maybe that's one way to quickly get people, because you're, now you've got everybody. And I, I get it. I don't, I don't pretend to know all the intricacies of each group, but you got everybody together. There, there, that might, yeah, it changes things. Could be good, could be bad, so.
Yeah, there's.
And Jen and I talked about too, um, kind of leveraging the PTO to support the New Albany for Kids. Like, it all needs to come together.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can remove some barriers there and kind of what the goals are and what the, what the goal and the point of the PTO is. And, you know, some of those broader discussions. And obviously, in any kind of large group, there's lots of differing opinions. So um in kind of imagining what what it should be, what it could be, kind of similar to what we've been doing with New Albany for Kids in the same way.
I just want to make sure it's on your radar that this is a conversation going on. In case you hear about it, Jen knows all about it, but it's, it's a very touchy subject. Um, there's a lot of varying opinions about it, and it's not our decision to make. You've been asked what we think. We've shared what we think. But we've made it clear, this is not our decision. It's a parent organization decision.
Debbie, you mentioned that. Just two things that again, just a personal level and maybe there something we can work into the benchmarks next year in some capacity. I just think as we've been at this for a few years, maybe not as long as you and um John, but you're just thinking about how we've always measured ourselves with with our benchmark on student achievement with the performance index. That's been one objective goal. I know we talked, we developed our statement purpose, the best academic developmental outcomes and define the best as being number one. And it just strikes me as like as we go through the diversity of our district and all the different uh nationalities that we have and just the, the, all the demographics that that are make up our district is maybe uh that's not always going to be the best measure of number one. And obviously, we're, we're top twenty, we're top thirty, but we want to be number one. And sometimes we may need to look at what is the right measure for that for a district or of our size, of our of our diversity, of all the things that we bring to the table. So I don't have the answer to this, and I just feel like there's got to be some other way that we look at our our measures of ourselves and compare ourselves to other districts across Ohio, across nationally, and whether that's um I remember charts that you put up about showing how we've moved student groups along the continuum. And and it's like, yeah, that's, that's an important thing for a district like ours. We've got people coming into our district, as you said, at Magnet School for for certain characteristics. So I just, we've been, we've been using the same one for many, many years. And it's a good one, but yeah, maybe there's something else or something we could do as a district that really shows why New Albany, what we're bringing to the table, um what we bring to our, our parents and the kids in our district. So we just have to think about it. Um, you know, the second item is um oh, really just, you know, goes back to our culture. And I think maybe, maybe we're going to get to it tonight. Maybe it's another night, but we've got our, our benchmarks here relative to enhancing school culture, social emotional well-being and stakeholder satisfaction. And again, I think that's something just from connecting our, our in-school um culture to our, those who are engaged in extracurriculars, whatever those might be, how we have best integrated, you know, what we've laid out as our purpose and our values into each of those student groups and the the coaching staffs, whether they're teachers in our district or not, and making sure that they are uh integrated wholly. So I saw some of the notes here from uh athletic director, Wildenhaus, about some things that have begun and things are going to be ongoing. But again, to me, that's, that's one that just I feel like it's continually coming up. And we just want to make sure we're, we're doing all we can to integrate you know, the culture we're trying to do, to create from the top and that it's touching, you know, all aspects of extracurriculars in addition to you know, in-house or other in-school activities.
So Paul's right, it's in your folders. Um, it's part of benchmark number five. I included because Paul asked you a question about it. So um, there is a document in there that we sent in the fall to the athletes, just an example of its origins on the seasonally of a letter that went home from building principals and the athletic director and the assistant athletic director. And attached to it, I'm going to skip the email and go to the action plan. So I asked Richie to create an action plan and reinforce the great values and expectations. Based on conversations at the place, um started with Mr. Wilson with me last summer, but then continued into other conversations into the fall. What we're specifically doing to look at the incorporation of the value statement, the R factor, the big framework, the athletic code of conduct and our OSU Coach Beyond Leadership Program that was being done. So Richie outlined those action steps based upon what would occur during each season to look at it cyclically, almost from a quarter perspective. I asked Richie at semester, just before Christmas break, um and you'll see the email for an update on where we're at in implementation of the action steps. So I just gave you the email summary. So when you read the plan, you can go back and look at the action steps for the progress that's been made to date um that address, looking at how do we extend to Paul's point, the value statement and the work that's happening across the school campus into extracurricular activities. This focus is athletics. Um, it doesn't touch upon other clubs, groups, organizations. This is specifically for athletics because Richie's involved. Um, the second piece, and it's in your folder, and I forgot to talk about it. So thank you, Paul, for the reminder. Um, the building inclusive campus culture framework that we have worked on within the school district, um Lori and I have had conversations with Cabinet. We believe it's time to resurrect this document and basically update it um to basically bring it into today. So there's a lot of historical things in here that go back to two thousand and eighteen prior to the pandemic. And there's stuff that was added after the pandemic and response to what we're trying to do when kids came back full time to this whole campus. So some of this history stuff, it's in here. We still, it may belong, may not belong. But we think we need to look at the goals and the action steps specifically that looked at what we were doing on building an inclusive campus culture to figure out what's ongoing, what can be updated, what can be changed um to modernize this. So this is work that we basically charged Cabinet to look at um for the rest of the spring semester, going into the summer. To have something prepped um for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So eventually, this will come back full circle. Lori's working on it with our directors. Um, and we will have a conversation next week with the big facilitators. Because we have big facilitators in the school district that are also involved at the building level with building admin. So we'll start this conversation with them. Leadership is aware. I've discussed it at the leadership meeting we had a week ago. It's been a week.
It's a week.
I think it's a week, last Monday.
Yeah.
Um, that we talked about this with leadership. We just think it's time that we should go back and revisit this to confirm. Okay, are the action steps still the same? Are the goals the same? What needs to be changed based upon our current reality throughout the school campus and the feedback that we'll get? We have a new student agency voice survey that we've never had before that we need to understand, how should that implement or influence this differently as we look towards the future? So this is something else we're purposely pulling back out to say it's time to revisit this um and figure out what we do with it.
Michael, does it make sense for Richie to come give us an update on the sort of work he's done?
Yeah, we can. I just haven't scheduled it, but we can. It, I don't think it's in February. I'm just going to be honest. Um, it may be March, but I can schedule that.
Okay.
That's fine. I can do that.
I think it'd be good to have the public discussion and and hear the work that's being done. And and that's our opportunity to to give some feedback and, you know, try to give guidance if we think it's warranted.
So I can kind of circle back with some of the communication stuff and thinking there's reference to that calendar outline. Is that something that the rest of us like have a rough draft, uh like, so that way, if I say, oh, I have something about this a question, it could wait till March because I see it's already on the calendar to kind of improve efficiency or um, you know, just, I'll just save it till then.
I have a running list, so yes, I can, we can do that. This, we have a running list that we get through.
I know it gets subject to change, but just like, you know, okay, let's, I'll just put that on the burner until.
If we try to balance, when we look at it, okay, like it's how much is there? So is it a four-hour board meeting, a three-hour board meeting, a two-and-a-half-hour board meeting? We try to figure that out based upon what we're scheduling.
Can we get those little things that Eric has been moving the peanut under the desk?
You could do five miles in an hour.
This is, this is tiny, tiny minor, but we were talking about businesses and then we were talking about athletics. I, I, I don't know if this, I'm sure this is something Richie's probably trying to do, but, you know, New Albany does have you know, some professional athletes that live here. Uh, I'm sure that I'm, you know, we sure that there are folks here who are also professionals in the arts. Just be curious to see whether or not we could find ways to engage them. And maybe they want appearance fees. I don't know, but you know, that might be something too for my to say, uh, you know, leadership or culture or, you know, commitment.
I'll put that in his radar so he can try to talk about it when he's here um for what he's doing, not doing, and why. I don't know the answer, so I can.
It's a good idea. They'll do a preview for professionals that live in the area and the students get feedback, so they kind of pray that in that perspective. Um, it's a really, it's a really nice um kind of
People like that.
Be back to them. So something similar for athletics.
So our, our last item before we go into executive session was, and and this doesn't have to you know, be right now in this room, we all come up with what our um development goals are, but you know, as a board or as individual board members, if there are development goals that you have and we can either bring in training or or go to training, um I'm, you know, I'm looking for um your thoughts on on what those needs might be and and what you'd like to focus on, what's on during this calendar year.
So my, my development area would obviously be picking up some rudimentary mechanical skills. Repair my own car so I can make.
All right, good luck with that. Um, if if this is something you guys want to go off and think about and come back, I think, you know, that's fair too.
Thanks.
Okay, Mark.
No, I think that uh I wasn't even, maybe I had known and forgotten that there was, you know, uh funds budgeted for that, so.
So it's something for us to think about. And if you want me to do a little research on what's out there, what's available, I can come back to the board.
There might be some interesting educational policy. You know, make tags or whatever the, that might be interesting. Um I haven't really thought about it. Um it doesn't have to be like OSBA stuff.
Right. Could be anything.
Yeah, so there may be some things that I, I, I haven't really thought about it.
And, you know, a couple of board members had meant it to me wanting to sit down on agenda review meetings and, you know, John, you've been in them, but um Paul, Jen, Mark, uh I, I can let you know when my agenda review meetings are and kind of rotate who comes and and, you know, uh, I'm happy to walk you through and and Michael is too and Becky in terms of how that conversation goes and building an agenda.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. As we've talked, and it's, if you have a set, is there a set time on Fridays you do those or is that, I mean, something we can count?
It's usually on a Thursday.
Usually Thursday afternoon, like one o'clock.
It gets moved around, but generally speaking, it's on Thursday afternoon at some point.
Yeah.
That, between that and kind of previewing the quarter of what you're thinking on these meetings, it just gives us a better vision as to how to, you know.
What's coming?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are we ready to adjourn into executive session? Everybody ready? Any other topics before? Okay. So um now we have a motion and a second to move into executive session as permitted by section one two one dot two two G five of the Ohio Revised Code for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, federal rules or state statutes. Mr. McCollum and Ms. Fuller, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Is President McCollum?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller, yes. Yes, on the meeting, there will be no action taken in executive session.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody want to buy, anybody want to buy?